How are you going? Welcome to the May meeting of the Cameron R. One Board of Education. Welcome to everyone in the crowd. It's been a really busy month so far, lots of concerts and ceremonies and graduation. Congratulations to all the graduates and their families. That was a really great evening and thank you to the staff for ordering up such nice weather that wasn't hot and a little windy, but next year we can do better on that, right? And congratulations to students and teachers for getting all the testing done that's been going on and looking forward to a good last couple of days of school. So we will ask you to all stand and we'll see the plan.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Cameron R. One School District is to offer an exceptional educational experience and the mission of the Cameron R. One School District is to educate and empower our students to reach their core potential. With that, I believe we're ready for Dragon Excellence Awards. And I have two here in front of me and I'll just read the first one. This certificate is presented to Amy Gunn for contributing to a vision of excellence in the Cameron R. One School District, achieved her education specialist general's degree from Northwest Missouri State University School of Education. Dragon Excellence Award. This certificate is presented to Jamie Dirks for contributing to a vision of excellence in the Cameron R. One School District, achieved her doctoral degree in music education from Liberty University. We've done several of those over the past year and it's really gratifying to see our staff taking the extra effort and putting that work into our entire district and we're really proud of you. All right. Before us, we have the proposed agenda. One thing I would like to do is move item 12M, which is the modification of district policies to non-action items. Those would be changes to school policies and so we'd like to provide notice that we will be voting on those next month and so if you have any comments that you would like to make on those policies, feel free to email or contact the board in the next 30 days and then we'll take that up at the June meeting. So do I have a motion to any other changes to the agenda or I take a motion to approve of that change? Mr. Grineer? Second. Second, Mrs. Ice. All favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Consent agenda. Any discussion?
I have a question of financial reports. Okay. So Dr. Robbins, I was going through it and I noticed that this month we have a large bill from Ed Council. Is there any, what's the reasoning behind that? I guess.
Well, I had to do a double take on that myself. I thought at first it was our renewal because obviously we use them for our policies and everything else. Actually, that is because every, obviously anytime an attorney works, they're going to charge this bill by the hour. But we had quite a few records that had to be searched and looked through for redacted records and it was a pretty big sunshine request that came through. And so when you've got that many records, it takes hours upon hours of doing that and when you're getting charged, you know, two hundred plus dollars an hour to have records looked at, you're building that up pretty quickly on some of those things. In that particular case, that was about eighty, ninety percent of that bill was just looking at redacted records and.
So with that being said, I made this and each one of us can have a copy and I've got one for the record also. So I went back the last 13 months, which is essentially since I've been on the board and you can see that roughly twelve to fifteen hundred dollars monthly is what we average, but you can see the spike. So I was just wondering if you could explain, oh, sorry.
Well, like I said, this last month was because of a sunshine request and.
A sunshine request or more than one sunshine.
No, this was a sunshine request.
One sunshine request.
So coming up, got one for the record also.
Thank you.
So essentially, if you just look through this, you can see I've highlighted what their bill was monthly going back to the 13 months of the meetings that I've been part of. You can see the fluctuation of this where, you know, in the time that we're talking about budgeting a lot and where money's going, this is something that kind of stood out to me. So I just thought I'd bring it up to everybody that was here, just to.
Dr. Robbins, you said this is, so that sunshine request was about eighty to ninety percent of this nine thousand.
Around eighty-two-hundred of the ninety-five-hundred dollars.
Eighty-two-hundred was the sunshine request? Eight thousand two hundred, okay. And that's for redacted records? From one sunshine request. Is that what we charge the customer?
Uh, no. We can only charge for most rate of employees, so it's twenty, twenty-some dollars an hour.
And we can't charge for redacts? We can only charge for searching, if I remember correctly? So we can search for.
We can only charge for renewal.
Yeah.
So this is a direct cost to the district? So yeah, you can flip through this and you can actually see kind of the way that this outcomes. Like I said, just the average, you can see anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred dollars, but you can see when it spikes. So I think the picture kind of paints itself as going through this. Like I said, I only went back to April of '24 because that's, that's as far as my time starts here. So you could go back further to see this, but I just thought that my snapshot just made sense to go there. Just something stood out whenever I opened up financial reports for the month because, like I said, last month we had a large bill the district had to take care of with our health insurance. So that was a big talk. So then whenever you see extra ten thousand dollars right there, I thought that that was something that everybody should kind of.
Absolutely.
Kind of key in on. So thank you for the explanation.
All right. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. First, Mrs. Peck? Second. Second, Mrs. Ice. All favor, raise your right hand. Right. Motion passes. Moving on to non-action reports, I believe we have some special guests.
Yeah, first one, we have some representatives from Zenith. Introduce your members and.
Absolutely. My boss, Von, because I can't see it that well. If you wouldn't mind just bringing it to that slideshow?
Yep, sure can.
Thank you so much. Don't know if my mouse actually works with it or not.
Somebody's trying to get into the door.
I'll just let you know when to turn because I don't think my mouse is going to work for that, but.
Okay.
So for those who don't, my name is Kimberly Holmes and I'm proud to be in my thirteenth year with the district and my third year instructing the Zenith gifted program. Zenith is our pull-out program for gifted learners in grade two through eight. I currently work with about 50 students and let me tell you, this is truly an incredible group of thinkers, makers, and problem solvers. And we'll just stay right there for just a minute. Gifted learners don't just need more, they need different. They thrive when we give them opportunities to go deeper, to be creative, to work at their own pace, and to pursue ideas that light them up. That's the heart of what we're doing in Zenith. If you could turn. Thank you so much. So in Zenith, students work in a supportive environment where curiosity is encouraged, creativity is celebrated, and learning looks different by design. Each grade level meets daily or on a weekly rotating schedule and we use our time to dive into advanced thinking, problem solving, and hands-on learning. Our students are driven by ideas. They often see the world from unexpected angles, ask big questions, and connect deeply to topics they care about. Zenith gives them a space where those qualities aren't just noticed, they're valued. We also emphasize social emotional growth. We talk about persistence, risk-taking, and learning from mistakes. These students are capable of amazing things when they feel safe to explore and empowered to lead. And if you could turn. So one major highlight this year was our participation in National History Day, a nationwide academic competition that challenges students to dive deep into historical topics and present their findings in creative, meaningful ways. Students chose their own topics and shared their research through websites, papers, exhibits, performance, or documentaries, whatever format best suited their story. The work was entirely student-led, from inquiry to execution, and the results were incredible. Their curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking were on full display. Several students attended the regional competition and four of our students qualified for state. One of those students, Harrison Lowenstein, and if you could turn to the netlist and then, I should have had you turn that a little sooner, there's some focus from that. And then here we go. And yeah, awesome. Made it all the way to the top six in Missouri with his documentary entry, Beyond the Algorithm: Balancing Global Rights and Responsibilities in the Ethical Use of AI. So I'd love to hand it over to Harrison now so he can share a little bit about his project and his experience with the competition. Now, it's a 10-minute documentary, so we won't watch the whole thing. I'll share that with you guys. I'll share the slideshow so that you can watch it as you have time, but Harrison will come up and play a little bit of it and answer any questions that you have. So if you could just click on that link. Algorithm: Balancing Global Rights and Responsibilities in the Ethical Use of AI. Stephen Hawking once said, "Success in creating AI would be the biggest event in human history." Unfortunately, it might also be the last unless we learn how to avoid the risks. Artificial intelligence, a tool that millions of people use. It's not only meant to chat with you like ChatGPT, there are many other functionalities. Society can benefit from AI in many different ways, such as in the military, the medical field, and the workforce in general. But we must also pay attention to the risks. While we should have the right to use this incredible technology in ways that could make our lives better, we also have a huge responsibility to make sure it isn't used in ways that could be harmful to us. It wasn't always here, nor was it used like it is today. So where did it come from? And when was it made? And. Stop right there and I'd love for you to take the opportunity to watch that whole thing in its entirety because it's really amazing. But Harrison, if you have any questions for Harrison, he'd love to answer those.
Harrison, where did you go to present?
I went to Columbia.
Were you nervous?
Very.
Were the judges hard to answer their questions?
Um, they were pretty easy. It was just like, what is your favorite primary source and stuff like that?
So what is your favorite primary source?
Okay, um, probably, um, you'll see, if you watch the rest of it, you'll know about it, but it's a paper that Alan Turing wrote about what the Turing test is and like how it works and everything. So then you could decipher if it's a robot or a human.
I want to jump in and say that one of the judges said, well, this is the greatest thing I've ever seen. How long did that take you? And Harrison, your answer was?
Like around seven months.
You've been working on that project for seven months?
Yes.
Harrison, what is your biggest concern when it comes to AI and your future?
Um, I just hope it doesn't take over the world because that might happen, hopefully, maybe.
What do you think it's most useful for?
Um, helping people with disabilities like work at restaurants and other stuff. Um, I mentioned that later on, um, it's, it can help in many different ways that also, um, it can help with cares and stuff like that, so.
Were there a number of kids that went?
Um, like at state?
At state?
Um, I went against seventeen other people.
Seventeen?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So another exciting project this year was our stop motion animation unit. Students designed characters, built sets, and used digital tools to bring their stories to life, one frame at a time. If you'll go ahead and turn to the next slide. So this project blends storytelling, visual art, technology, and patience. It's a perfect example of how gifted learning learners flourish when given creative freedom and real-world tools. The results were not only entertaining, they showed grit, collaboration, and pride in their work. One fantastic example came from Sylvia Stewart, who created a project titled Christmas Catastrophe. Her animation combined humor, detailed design, and creative storytelling and really captured this spirit of the unit. It's really short, so we'll let you play that. It's really short. So they created these articulated figures and then each movement is a different photograph put together. And if you could go ahead and go to the next one. Um, this year we also used Tinkercad, a 3D design program, to explore spatial reasoning and design thinking. Students created digital models and printed their work using our classroom 3D printers. From nameplates to custom tools to passion projects, the possibilities were endless and students loved seeing their ideas go from screen to physical form. If you could turn. Here's just a couple of examples. It's not just about the cool factor, it's about applying geometry, precision, and problem solving in a way that feels meaningful and exciting. All of these projects and more came together at our Spring Inspired Night, where families and community members were invited to celebrate our students' passion projects. Every student chose their own area of interest, developed a driving question, and created something to share. We had everything from documentaries and 3D models to scientific investigations and student-made games. The turnout was fantastic and the feedback from families was deeply affirming. For many students, this was their first time sharing work in a public setting and they shined. It was truly a celebration of who they are as learners. Tonight, you'll get a glimpse of that as well. Josie Lanigan and Finnegan Mulliken have brought their projects to share with the board and we'll leave those here and I'll pick those up before Thursday to give those back. I'm excited for you to see firsthand the creativity, thought, and passion that went into their work. Oh, there you are, right next to me, Finn. I was looking for you when you were right there. And they brought a couple of projects that they made. Josie, do you want to turn yours on? And they would love to answer any questions that you have about their projects.
Are they ice skating? Yes.
So what gave you the idea to do that?
Well, I was thinking about doing like dancing, people dancing, but I didn't exactly know what I was going to do for that. So I was thinking, um, we went through a couple things to figure out what we're going to do to make them move and we decided that it would be a good idea to make.
And just to jump in, Josie, we printed that, Josie built it, like all of that is built by Josie, painted, and she's created.
Are there magnets on there? Is that how they're moving?
Josie, why don't you turn that over to show her the bottom?
So.
So that's all those.
Like here's the gear and then this is what connects them all. And then all the gears. So this holds all of them together and holds this. And this, these two nails go into there and then they connect to there. And then these gears all move to make these moves and they have magnets.
So those three gears, the ones moving, have the magnets. That's right. And you built all of this with the 3D printer?
Yeah.
And then Finn created this neighborhood. It went from a vision in his mind to a physical form.
What materials did you use for that?
I used felt for the roads, sidewalks, and grass. I took a box and put like made of cricket, 3D, well, AI-generated side.
Tell me about the AI.
Yes, the trees are 3D printed and we used the misprinted one trees to make stops.
Oh, very good. So the misprinted trees turned into stops.
I have to jump in. Finn designed the houses, like he built the houses in Tinkercad and then, and then printed them. So it's like he, he designed and built the houses.
You should pick that up and take that over there so I can see even the tops are, are designed that way.
How long did it take for you to do this whole project?
About two, two and a half months.
And what grade are you in?
Third.
Do you think you might like to be a designer later?
Yes, I, I have a dream of being an engineer.
And if you'll just watch that next slide. I'm incredibly proud of the growth I've seen in our students this year and I'm even more excited about where Zenith is heading. We're continuing to expand hands-on learning, integrate real-world tools, and create space for student-driven exploration. Thank you for supporting innovation and innovative, meaningful programming for our gifted learners. They're not just learning facts, they're building confidence, resilience, and a lifelong love of learning. Thank you much. The very last slide. So if you ever want to see Zenith in action, I'd love to have you visit or join us for next year's Inspire Night. You won't be disappointed. And we're also planning on having a stop motion animation, movie premiere for next year as well.
Thank you. You have, they do all of this in your classroom?
Yes, they do.
And so you yourself have had to become a student.
We had forty-six different projects going on for Inspire Night, all different types of projects. Yes, I, I did not know how to 3D print prior to teaching Zenith or stop motion animation. Yes, I had to learn all that myself as well.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Great job. Good job.
Pretty cool. I can't wait to see the designs of them. I see a part of that. All right, well, that's going to be hard to follow, but I think this is Bader Maas.
This is so great.
What was I going to start with here?
Presentation, I guess. Yeah. So I just kind of wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about what I've been doing since I last spoke to you.
Sorry, Mike. I'm sorry. Thank you.
The camera? I emailed it too.
There's a big, there's a bigger one.
I'm not sure how much. I started with the communications plan. I'm not sure how deep we want to go into that at this point, mostly because at the end of the year, we're talking about changes that are coming for next year. And so I just want you guys to know, at this point, it's very fluid. It's probably going to continue to be fluid because communication, so fundamental is also ever-changing. So I'll kind of start just with an overview. I don't know, did you want me to go over some of the communication plan?
No, just take ten thousand foot view now, so.
Okay, perfect. So that's out there for you guys to kind of look at. I'd like some feedback, but I want to actually go on to the communication platform because this is kind of where I'm going with it. At the beginning of the year, I kind of started hearing from staff and from families like, I'm just not getting any communications. I'm not, I'm not, my coaches aren't able to message me and let me know what's going on. So most people who have been with the district pretty long have familiarity with Remind. So I thought, let's see what we can do to get Remind back. And so I got a quote at the beginning of the year and a month later, went to a conference and they said, well, we actually purchased Remind. It's called Parent Square and it's now part of our platform. So I started looking into that, what, well, what does Parent Square entail? And if you go to the next one, I'm going to do kind of a side-by-side of what we currently have versus what I'm recommending that we switch to. We're currently paying just under ten thousand dollars a year for the program we use for our communication platform. So Thrill Share, which we use to post to our social media, it's what we send our alerts out to families. It just kind of does everything for us. It's in one, one place. It also is our website administrator. And so we started looking into some analytics with that and found out that our website's really not doing that great, not getting that many hits on except for the calendars, which goes back to some conversations I've had with some of you guys and as well with other family members and other stakeholders about the calendars. So with APTOGI or Thrill Share, if we wanted to add a two-way communication, which is text, the SMS, it's going to cost us an additional seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year to add that. In order to get it, we have to change our SIS, which is Teacher E's. It's our student information system. We have to go back to rooms, which is what we just left a year ago before I came to the district. So it's not really something we're looking at doing because it's too much of an undertaking to switch our SIS that quickly. So we wanted something that we could keep that and that would integrate with our communication platforms that we need to get in place. On that screen, go back one more just real quick. When we were doing our analytics on our current website, it's very difficult to get analytics without something called Google Analytics, apparently. It's an extra tool they have to use in order to get that information. And what we can tell is how many views we're getting on each of the pages on our website and they're very low. So what I'm seeing from other resources that I've been gathering is that your website should be where people go as a hub for information. It should go to one place, it should be tailored to the person going to it, and it should be easy to use. You shouldn't be searching and searching for something, I just want to know what sign the office at Parkview opens or I want to know who is in charge of communications or whatever, like it should be easy to find that information. So we started talking with Parent Square. You can go on to the next slide, I know. So with Parent Square, they have a web interface that is tailored to the user. So if you're a staff member, your classes are listed. If you're a coach, your teams are listed. If you're a principal, all of your classes are listed. So it's very granular to the user's level. If you're both a parent and a staff member, you have an integrated system, but you can sign in either way, so you can get the information that you need for your particular use. I could go on and on about this platform, but just trust me when I say it is going to revolutionize our communication. It is, the price for it with the two-way SMS is less out the gate than what it would be to. It is, the price for it with the two-way SMS is less out the gate than what it would be to add the communication platform to APTOGI. And next year, because there's an onboarding fee, basically, it'll be almost $6,000 less per year than what we're paying now. The, if, if you wanted to click at the top, I think I linked it to a video of the recording, but I, I really don't know that it's gonna be beneficial, it's like an hour-long recording. So nobody wants to listen to that for an hour. I just feel like the calendars are integrated, you can put your Google calendars, we can pull the mission calendar in. Every calendar that you are a part of, whether it's on your personal phone, anything, you can integrate it into their calendar system. The user of the calendars, let's just say, I don't wanna pick on anybody, but let's just say vocal music has a bunch of things coming up, and there's a concert, and it's all on the calendar at the beginning of the year. Well, weather's bad, or we have to reschedule, or whatever. They change it on their calendar, and they can set a reminder that goes out to everybody that's in the vocal music group that says, hey, this date has changed. So the communication is just easy and it's immediate. I think it's what people have been asking for, and I think that ParentSquare will deliver that. Any questions on that?
Does that work with Team TeacherEas?
Yes. And ParentSquare will, they will port our website into a new system. It's part of their, it's called Smart Sites. It will be new and refreshed, and when you go to our website, you are transported into your own hub, basically. So everything that's yours under the school, all your kids' classes, all your kids' sporting events, outside events, extracurriculars, you set it up how you want it. It is user-defined for your language choice. Any communication that comes out and goes in, you choose that. You can choose whether you get immediate communications or if you wanna daily digest. Maybe you don't wanna know everything that happens, all the communications that go out, but at the end of the day, you wanna say, you know, these four things happened today, and here's your text, to a text to you. There's no three-factor authentication, you don't have to go through seven layers to get to where you're going, which with APTOGI, you do. There's three factors that you gotta go through, you have to get a code, all of that, just to get a, just to message somebody or get a message from somebody.
So will this make it easier for parents to communicate with teachers?
Yes.
Because I think TeacherEas is not the easiest to communicate with teachers.
Right. So this is the not confusing part, but it's multifaceted. So we'll continue TeacherEas, it will still be where our grades are scored, or kept and all of that, but you, I just don't think, I don't anticipate being used as a communication tool. Right now, it comes to the user, the parent, as an email, but it's really just a notification. And with ParentSquare, it's a text. Or if you're logged in, it could be as easy as an InstaPassage. So it's very, very direct.
So will this also get rid of, like, the Remind app?
I mean, yes.
Because, you know, if you're in sports or activities, you, you still have Remind.
It includes all of our, it's based off of our enrollment size. So anything that has to do with our enrollment, whether it's a sport, an activity, anything, they can all use ParentSquare. They'll just have to sign up as a user for it. It's included in our boss.
So how, what's the plan for populating content? Because part of the reason that we don't use websites sometimes is because we don't find them as usual, like.
Yes.
What's the plan to make our content current?
Yes. So a lot of what's on our website now is stuff that's required by law to be on there. It's not stuff that you and I go and look at, it just has to be on there by law. What makes people, what will make people go to this is that our, the information that has to be there will be there. It will have, we, just like now, we could put stuff up on the website every day, but if nobody's using it, it's, it's a waste of time, quite frankly. So if we make the web interface that you'll get to through the website, that takes you to everything you need to see, that's gonna, it's just a portal to get you where you need to be, essentially. But every time somebody goes through the website to get to their web interface, to interact with their kids, whatever, it's gonna go through the website. But they will port it, I think up to 200 pages are included in the quote that we got. We don't have nearly that many pages, I don't believe. And then it'll be a good time for Mr. Eckert and I to go through and just really do some house cleaning, get rid of things that we don't need, update stuff, and that'll be a summer job.
How will, who will own the calendars? Like, who puts the calendar? I know you said mission and.
Right.
Does the teacher own it? Do you own it?
I would say, like, for instance, let's just say the PAC calendar. Whoever currently owns the PAC calendar, which is a Google calendar, will own that calendar. They'll be responsible for updating that calendar. If you have a calendar on your phone, that's all the things you do, and you wanna put your Google calendar into your web interface calendar. You're the only ones gonna see that. You will tailor what you wanna see in your calendar to the things that you're interested in.
Do you have any districts that currently use this that we could?
There are a bunch. I, off the top of my head, I know John Flynn uses it. I heard today, I think maybe Carney uses it.
I could go look.
Yes, look at some of them. And you will know by looking at the website that you're looking at a ParentSquare website. There are multiple templates that we can set up to look however we want it to look like. It just looks like any website, but it's, it's user-friendly, works a lot like a Google site, so it'll, it'll be super easy to program.
Learning curve?
Simple.
Are we gonna have trainings with teachers and staff?
I, okay, so I'm, I'm not super techie, but I'm, I'm techie enough. And when they showed it to me, I was like, oh, it's super simple, it looks a lot like a social media page.
So it's pretty intuitive?
Very intuitive, yes. It has Canva integration, so if you do a flyer, you have a bizarre coming up, and you do a flyer, you just bam, right, upload it right to your, your ParentSquare site. So there's, there's so, I mean, there's just so many facets to it that are user-friendly and what looks simple to me.
So this sounds like a one-stop shop. We're gonna take away a bunch of different things and put it all in one.
Yes.
We have one place, everybody, that everything the district can go to.
Yes.
Because I've heard the same complaints that you brought up.
Yes, over and over.
It's tough to have all these different outlets to try to get information to, or we put it one place.
The more impediments there are to communication, the more trouble there is getting and sending and receiving information. And we need to get rid of those impediments and make it easy for, equitable for everybody to get the information. One thing I didn't mention also is Title II ADA compliance for technology. There's a new date of April of 2027 that everything has to be in compliance with. Both of these programs are ADA compliant, but they, ParentSquare just, to park it back to AI, does a lot of that kinda stuff for us, so.
Is this something that could be up and running by August 1st?
August 1st.
So will all of our coaches and extracurriculars want to use that? And will they use that to communicate then with parents and students?
Archivable for at least seven years. Technically longer, I'm sure if we would put in a request to them, they could do that. And observable, so we could, you know, for oversight and things like that, if we, if we needed to have something like that, we could.
Are students able to create groups to communicate with them, like in subsets?
I believe so. That is probably something we need to talk a little bit more about, just to see what we want as a district as far as that goes.
Because I've heard concerns about, yes, different apps being used by just the kids.
Right.
And some of the kids that don't have access to the app or not.
Yes, they will be users, and so I don't see any reason why they would not be able to subscribe to those same groups.
And so what are options for our kids that don't have phones?
I mean, computers, I mean, they, I mean, we're one of the one in a lot of it.
Still access it through, like, a computer lab?
Yes. Yep, it's access it through the website, access it through an app, access it directly through text messaging.
And then we can have the parent request a calendar, we can.
Yes, right. Essentially like what we would do now.
Yeah, I mean, notes home.
Yes, right. It should never take the place of, you know, direct communication, obviously. If a parent needed, or if a teacher needed to call a parent or whatever, that would still.
Yeah, I think we just gonna be able to prepare for a parent who says, I want these.
Yes, right.
Right. Sure. So I know we kinda left Remind, you entered rooms.
Yes.
So this will be our third transition?
So Remind was only really kind of a platform for communication, right? Rooms was actually part of our SIS, our student information system. Now we use TeacherEas as our, as our information system, but from what I've been told when we, when we joined them last year, rooms did not have a two-way SMS capability, and TeacherEas led us to believe that they did. So we've discovered this year that, one, they don't even have one-way SMS communication, and they don't know when or if they will ever get two-way SMS communication. Possibly because Remind now slash ParentSquare might have provided their interest in that capacity for education.
Were we under any sort of contract with rooms?
Our, our, no, not with rooms, as far as I know. With APTOGI, we're contracted until July 31st. So if we make a decision by the end of May, when I talked with ParentSquare last, they were at an August 1st start date. So it should be a seamless transition if and when we make that decision. Riveting, I know.
Very important for this. Communications are the things that we have identified as an area we want to improve.
Yes.
Appreciate your work there.
Yeah. It's, you know, with the communication plan that I was building, it kind of was super important to me in learning all the components of that and how the calendaring system, which is included in the plan they sent you, how the communications that we put out, the newsletters, all of that stuff will come, I don't even think I mentioned the newsletters. They have a newsletter component in ParentSquare that will go along with our branding slash rebranding that we might be gonna do next year. I'm recommending that we start a committee to start talking about that, to go along with the profile of Dragon Learner that, that's been going on all year long this year, so. That's pretty much it on that component. I have a few other things to touch on, unless anybody has any more questions on, on ParentSquare. I'm happy to put you guys in touch with the Zoom call that we recorded, if you have, if you wanna see it in action. So I just wanted to give a few analytics on our social media. And I did a comparison of August 31st through December 31st. So it would've been right before I started through the end of the year versus January to now, about the same equivalent 18 weeks. And our views are up, it doesn't give us a change, it just tells us how many views we've had during that time period. And then our reach has gone up 5%, and that's just how many people we're getting out of all through tags, links, that sort of thing. And then content interactions, which is the number of likes or reactions, saves, comments, shares, any kind of interaction that they have with it is up 186%. So I think that has to do with seniors, and I wasn't making those posts, so I don't wanna take credit where it's not due, but people that are going to that, videos that we've made to share out, those kinds of things, you know, it's just showing us that people are wanting to see the content that we're putting out. And this is only for the Cameron Owen School. Some of, some of that includes all of our pages. So we've got a high school page, and middle school page, and a media, and Parkview, and then we have an activities page as well. And then our visits on the next one are up 144%. You can kinda see the ebbs and flows of that. If you look back, like on our calendars, you'll see what corresponds with some of those dates of when the things happen that people were interested in seeing. And then our follows are also up 82.1% over six months ago. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of reference to where our social media is at. Obviously, just a place to share things that are going on, but not, not your, your base level of communications. And then some things I've done in the social media realm. We did get the social media guidelines through review and put out in January, haven't had any issues with that since. And then this summer, I'm gonna start working on a social media policy, which I mentioned on our last visit, but just got busy with these other things, I haven't had a chance to really sit down and dig into it. Things that I'll be looking at in preparing that, most, most specifically for the staff members who are using social media as administrators, but permissions and verifications, making sure that we're perfectly compliant, we're not sharing things that shouldn't be out there. Of course, using best practices and then professional standards for social media. I've been working on the transparency page to get the sunshine law requests out there. There, it's not quite ready yet, it's not passed by nor review to get it out onto our webpage yet, but hopefully soon. Since December, we've had 29 sunshine law requests, and the total money received by the district is $116.92. And I had also mentioned, just because it was in the sunshine law realm, the large legal service bill that we got this month, just for comparison, what we, what we've brought in in sunshine law requests versus what we have paid out for our sunshine law requests. And I think notably on that, the request was made for records that could've been searched and obtained by the people who made the request and instead was sent through as a sunshine law request, which forced us then to have redactions done to comply with federal and state statute. On newsletters, currently, Dr. Ormsby has been doing the gold and putting that out quarterly. Starting in the fall, I'll be taking that over. And I've been looking into increasing the frequency of a newsletter. Not necessarily that it has to be of the great caliber that the gold is, but something maybe monthly that just talks about things that are happening within the district, things that don't always get in as frequently when it's a quarter and you're trying to shove more stuff into a shorter period of time. So I included what our cost is now. I've been getting some quotes both from our current vendor and also from additional ones out of Kansas, and they're both working on some quotes, so I'm not ready to present anything on that yet. I just kinda wanted to let you know I'm working on that. We wanna get the information out to our external stakeholders, make sure that they're not missing things that, that are pertinent to them as well. And if anybody cares, I've been doing other stuff as well. I've been to a lot of school activities, taken, taken thousands of photos, made some pretty cool videos, I think.
If I could just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
If you haven't seen the video of the Parkview kids telling their advice to the seniors, go out on your, on the Facebook page and watch that, because it is definitely worth your time. It was really well done.
It was cute. As, as a parent of a senior, I was putting it together and emotional myself, just putting it together, which is ridiculous, but.
So they're wise for their years.
They are, they are. A few other things, attended some meetings, including, we're kinda getting the Education Foundation back up and going again. We kinda had a hiatus during COVID and just haven't, haven't until recently got that back up and going. So thanks to them for providing a meal during Teacher Appreciation Week. And then I helped with the information campaign with the bond. And wanted to shout out to Daryl Howell and Lori Muffert, Karen Hamlet, Morgan Scott, Dan Poles, Jason Cross and Kelly Martin, and anybody else who helped in any way with the bond. I've attended a couple of conferences that's really connected me with a network of just consummate professionals in the PR and communications world that have willingly, willingly shared their knowledge and their resources with me. We got the kind of recording of these meetings pretty well streamlined, hopefully it's going right now. Lots of monthly webinars and trainings, a list of those are there. I've had several conversations with Dr. Robinson about the rebranding, so that's coming as well. Lots of media requests, 65-plus social media posts. Custodian of Records, I think, is about to have my name on it, and multiple staff and family communication. So I've been busy. Hopefully, everybody has benefited in some way. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And you want, I'm sorry, you want feedback on, or questions or anything?
On the communication plan? I don't think so yet. Just wanted you guys to have that in your hands.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Bader. The next non-action item is AI. So I asked that this be on the agenda, and I think the presentation earlier this evening was very relevant to us. And we should go watch the documentary to get some ideas on how we should approach AI. But this is something, you know, that is becoming, and we've talked about it before, it's becoming more and more prevalent, and it's going to be something we're.
more and more prevalent, and it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with. And so, you know, I'd like to start the conversation about what the board's pleasure is in terms of trying to put something down in terms of a district policy on AI. And I think the first draft that we saw was really just, here are the things that are against the rule. And so I think we know what those things are, which should be part of the policy, but I think we also should set the vision for use for AI. And so what I'd like to see is some ideas on, you know, how we want our teachers to be able to use that, because it can be a time saver. If we train our teachers on how to write a prompt and have it help you grade papers or have it help you write test questions that you would edit or help you outline a class, or all sorts of different things I think teachers could use it for. Also, how we would want to have our students learn to use it. This is going to be something that's around for them to use, and so if we send them out into the world with nothing, I think we're probably doing them a disservice. So that's my opinion. I mean, you can all have different opinions, but so how do we use it in the classroom? And then just district-wide, do we need to adopt one technology? I think there are security issues around it. We want to make sure we're not crossing lines, get the adequate training in so we don't put, you know, kids' information in a public chat GPT or something and then it's exposed, that kind of stuff. So just thoughts on that in general? Is that something we want to push to council to say, vice first draft, and here's an outline of what we'd like to say, and then we can work on it some, or what's your pleasure?
I think that we should. I think we should reach out to see what, maybe see what other districts have as far as policies, because AI is here and it's not going anywhere. So I mean, if we don't start, you know, showing people the good side of it, like what was presented to us earlier, then, I mean, it needs to be used. It's going to be part of everything. So if we teach people to use it the right way, then I think that's what we need to do to build a future around here with it. So I mean, I think reaching out to see, you know, if we can reach out to council and see what they've provided for the other districts, and kind of see what this is, where it starts to build a policy for ourselves that we're comfortable with, I think that's a good start for us.
Also, too, I mean, as far as classroom use, I think it would be a good idea to reach out to our own teachers and just have them tell us how AI can help them. They're going to know better than us, so maybe send something out.
I hope I'm not overstepping. Fifth grade has recently used AI, right? Been talking to Amelia Earhart, and they went on a field trip to Day Today. Last year, I was fascinated when we went to Career Day, because they were using AI to actually have like conversations with Amelia Earhart, and they were so, I mean, that was just mind-boggling to me, you know, but I mean, so it's already in the classroom, so we just need to get ahead of how responsible.
What I think ethical and responsible use, just like, I mean, I'm all for technology. I'm sure there was a date and time. When I was in high school, there was no computer, and I can remember my senior year, suddenly there was a computer. And now, how do we live life without a computer? So we used to do all our math by hand. Now we're using calculators, and nobody thinks twice that you pull out a calculator and do. But the kids understand the basics of math. So ethically, and I think it's important that we teach responsible use.
Not as a replacement.
Not as a replacement, yeah. And then he touched on it, and I thought that was good, that I think it's important that we teach our kids how to decipher something that's authentic or something that's not authentic. So I don't know the method, but I know there's things out there that can determine what's AI and what's not AI. And I don't know, they're way over my head, but those are things I think we need to look at.
One thing I think that we're getting at is, when you're using AI to be critical and check the sources, it's accurate, because it's not always accurate.
Right. How for, that would be valuable to also canvas the community, see what people in the community think and what their concerns are. Where, you know, you have a lot of things that you're focusing on in here, but the community is also aware of AI and some of the hazards and dangers, and you want to know what they want to see addressed in your policies.
Yeah, we will actually be talking later about a community engagement meeting to where AI would be looked at. So yeah, so I think, you know, ethical, responsible, not as a replacement for what you would learn in a classroom, authentic, how to use it appropriately, identify authenticity, all the things, and then legal in terms of compliance with Propa, what's that intervention laws? Anything else? I mean, those are kind of some guidelines that we can ask them, because I think, you know, in terms of wording on a policy, with it evolving so rapidly, anything too detailed is going to be outdated immediately. So I think we probably need to do real general broad sweeping and allow the way within the policy for, you know, modifications and quick adjustments. So any other thoughts? Okay. All right. Cell phones are next on the agenda. Again, this is also mine. I've put on here. The legislature did pass a bill that includes language that speaks to cell phones in schools, which I know you're all aware of. I printed off the bill and highlighted some of the language I thought would be useful for us to consider. I think I'd like for us to talk about how we want to approach this topic, because this is something, it says, the bill requires it for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so we're going to have to take action on it sooner than later. And it would be good if we could get this in place to vote on in July, if possible, so we can put it in the handbooks. I don't know if that's a timeline that we can actually accomplish, so it's pretty quickly, but. So just for information, electronic personal communications device is what the statute focuses on, and that's pretty much about anything that can initiate, receive, store, or view communications, information, images, or data electronically. So we're talking about cell phones, we're talking about smartwatches, we're talking about tablets, anything that receives or sends information. So it's electronic devices, essentially.
That would be seen as what we're looking at.
And then it talks about a student's possession or use of that kind of a device. Our policy should be designed to promote the educational interests of students and to provide a safe and effective working environment for school employees and volunteers. So the statute speaks to students not being able to use it, does not require the same for staff. So it prohibits students from displaying or using the electronic devices from the beginning of the school day until the end of the school day, including, but not limited to, instructional time, meal time, breaks, time between classes, and during study halls. So it's a very comprehensive belt-to-belt type of a law, and there are some exceptions. It does require disciplinary procedures to be explained in the policy, and the exceptions are for IEPs and 504s, health emergencies, and then some state, federal statutes. And then there are some optional exceptions listed where you can make exceptions for emergencies that are listed in the statute as well. So I was just wondering, I was thinking that as we're working on this, we probably need, I'd like to ask staff for a recommendation on how they would implement this, because I think that's going to be, the question isn't, you know, do we want to do belt-to-belt? I think that's required now.
That's how it is.
But how do we want to store the cell phones? Because there's, you know, different options. You could put a cellphone on airplane mode in a bag. You could get the cellphone lockers, you could get those little pouches, you know, different options. So that would be one of the things. And then recommendation on what the discipline, you know, gradation would be based on violations of the policy. And that, staff usage, I think, is another thing I'd like to see in the policy. I don't know about you all, but just making sure that it's clear that, I think it's a tool for staff, but I would also like to see our staff focused on during instructional time, to make it clear that we're focused on the students during that time, and then providing our exceptions, so.
And I think, things that we've done over the last couple of years, we've already got a start on this. So I think we already have discipline for when it's out during class time, so I think we can just probably take that as a starting point and expand on that.
I think we're going to need to spend some time on what that's going to look like if it's belt-to-belt.
Yeah.
What that's going to look like if the wrestling team or the music class leaves at twelve, and they're all running back and forth, running to the first hour, teachers trying to get their phones, if that's what we decide to do. So, yeah, I think we're going to have to figure out some procedures on what that looks like, where we would have to keep those, you know, because that can be very hectic every day, having disruptions for all types of groups running around trying to get their cell phones or.
I'd like to see us not only, I mean, survey our staff, but also maybe create some sort of committee that definitely includes like the principals, but definitely the assistant principals that are the ones that are, deal more with the disciplinary issues every day, and how this would affect them.
Possibility of cellphone lockers in an entrance point into the school building where we weren't into the classroom, but like in the commons area? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we've, I guess we've looked at lockers, but I mean, they've been more like a bag type thing or just a metal cabinet. I don't know what that would look like if we have enough five hundred or, I have no idea.
There's a good three-D project, printing project.
I'm guessing five hundred districts in these areas are going to be looking.
That's right. Somebody's going to.
And I've looked into the yonder pouches. I mean, I think that the idea of them is good. I think the kids are going to figure out how to get around them anyway, so.
And I think there are some studies that basically show the location of a cellphone in the room versus outside the room does impact the ability, the scores on the test. So, you know, to the extent that we can educate ourselves on what that looks like and put our students in the best position to learn, I think that should be part of the equation as well.
Anytime you make a drastic change like this, it's most drastic on the freshman, sophomore, juniors. By the time we get those kids up into high school who are used to it, it's all of a sudden, it's the norm, and you can move on. But right now, it will be an adjustment for our students and parents.
Right.
And they want to know, they're talking to them, addressing that.
Yes, yes. And, you know, it would be a change. I do think, if I thought this through correctly, there would be some parents of Parkview kids who would have had a cellphone when they were in school, but the kids that are in high school, I don't think there's probably that issue. So all of us were unable to, you know, parents called the office and said, I need to talk to my kid, and thus, you know, we could, sometimes the old ways are the best ways. So is that, do you think we'll together a committee and we can work on some dates and let you guys mull around with some options and provide us with some thoughts?
We can do that.
What about students being involved in the committees? Is that something that you want to include or? Like, we just, we just sent us that, students, and so obviously, that student had given some insight or some, a lot of research into it, so I'm sure there's other students that have been thinking about this or that have ideas, so maybe at some point.
Okay, so we'll touch on it again next month.
Okay.
Okay, legislative.
Quite a bit has happened since our last meeting. Obviously, the legislative session has ended. That ended May sixteenth. They had to have a budget prepared by May ninth. That was, they did it, they did, by the last skin of their teeth, get the budget done that they're constitutionally mandated to do. Couple positives on that. They did increase the SAT, which is part of the foundation formula. They did increase that amount of money, almost three hundred million dollars across there to help fund the rest of the foundation formula, or increase the foundation formula. That part will be very interesting, because the governor did not want to see that increase when he gave his state address in January. So he does have the ability to line item veto. We're obviously hoping he doesn't, see that is an increase and will help us out a little bit. They did increase transportation, not a bunch, about fifteen million dollars, but we've spread that among five hundred districts. It's not going to go very far. It's obviously based by student population. And then they funded the minimum teacher salary to get that up for schools that were not there yet. Obviously, we've been above it for a while, but they did fund that as well. That was part of the education bill. The other one was the one hundred and sixty-nine day weather provision. I'm not sure that that is going to change much. We decided to do the one hundred and sixty-nine days because the state is giving us some money back, or I think it's worth it to do that.
Can you explain what that means? What an interesting thing.
Well, the state effectively do not like four-day school weeks, and so they set up a system where they would reward schools that go one hundred and sixty-nine days out of the year. And so then you end up with one percent of your foundation formula money this year, the second year, which it's always paid in the rear, so this year, we'll get paid next year, next year, we get paid the following year, but then it goes to two percent, it stays at two percent. You know, for a district us, our size, that's about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars, but that allows us to give everybody their step just off of the money back from the state. Now, there was some weather provisions, because obviously, we had to take away some days for spring break. We had to make up a day. Normally, we'd be out tomorrow, but we're making up a day on Thursday. They kind of did that, but the way they did it, they went back to the old way, which was once you got to six days, then you had to, every other one you had to make up type situation. Well, and then they won't count any of my as a missed day because it's instruction day, so. Well, I mean, obviously, we've set the calendar next year for one hundred and seventy days, which gives us a couple days, actually, one hundred and seventy-one days, sorry. It gives us a couple days, but that was part of the education bill, but it's not going to have much impact, that weather provision. The other one that does have an impact on us is effectively with Senate Bill 567, they repealed Proposition A, which everybody voted on in November. That raised minimum wage. That also had some provisions about how much sick time, if you work so much, you got so much sick time. They effectively repealed all of that, but they did keep the minimum wage requirement that it has to be fifteen dollars an hour by July first, two thousand and twenty-six. And before, we were.
January first.
I'm sorry, what did I say, July? Yeah, sorry, January first, two thousand and twenty-six, that we have to be at fifteen dollars an hour. That was across the state. And before, we were exempted from that. We're no longer exempt from that. Everybody in the state now has to go to fifteen dollars an hour, so that meant we had to do quite a bit of changing to some of our non-certified staff to get that up to that point in time. Luckily, we'd already kind of been working towards that. The other one, and I don't remember which bill it is, but for the first time in the history of our state, we'll not be paying public tax money to pay for kids to go to private schools or parochial schools, to the two to fifty million dollars. They had a fifty-million-dollar voucher plan before where you could buy tax credits, and then you could effectively use that fifty million dollars. It's now up to a hundred million dollars, and fifty million dollars of it is public tax money being used for private and parochial schools. And then Senate Bill 63 is a homeschool bill that allows students to be able to participate in activities. If they're homeschooled, they can participate. There is some provisions in there, like if you want to be able to participate with marching band, you at least have to be in the marching band class, or if you're going to be able to do FFA, you may have to do like a CTE-type class to be ready for that. But that's going to be, that's going to be interesting, and I think that's. But that's gonna be, that's gonna be interesting. And I think that takes effect pretty quickly. That'll be interesting just because we hold our kids that come to school with attendance provision. They have to be there 90% of the time. We've raised our standards for our activities participants with grades and what they have to participate. And then we do the random drug testing. Now, you can have a homeschool student that wouldn't have to do any of those. And as long as the parent tells us that they're passing their classes, we have to accept that. And so I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little hard to hold other kids accountable when I could have somebody that could come in and play without any of those other provisions. Mom and dad telling us that they are waking up and doing their school and doing their grades. So I'll be, I'll be curious on what that's gonna look like and how we'll, what we'll have to do for that. And then Senate Bill 68, the cellphone, was, which we just discussed, was obviously big. And the fact that they made it this year, next year immediately. It was all year, it's been 26, 27. And then the last minute, they changed it and made it for this year. And I think that's a trend we're gonna see all over. There's a lot of states that have already taken action and doing stuff. That's kind of the legislative pieces that I thought were important. There's obviously a lot more bills than that, but these are the ones I felt like were important to us.
Questions?
If I remember, I read some of that language for the homeschool participants. And it said that they would have to comply with some of the standards set by the school district. Do you think that could include being randomly drug tested and...
You know, I don't know on that. Because like I said, some of the provisions, like I said, that I saw were like you couldn't participate in the marching band unless you actually had the band class. You know, you couldn't participate, you know. So it'll, I'm not sure exactly. I think we're all, and usually what happens on these is they get very, they start off here vague. And then everybody starts trying to figure out what they even interpret. And then next year, they'll try to clean it up because they realize that there was way too much interpretation or something else. But usually, that first year, we're less kind of scrambling trying to figure out what's gonna be, you know, legal.
Right. What they did put in there, though, is if a student decides to leave the public school to go homeschool, they have to sit out of athletics or activities for a year.
Yeah, 12 months.
Yeah, because attendance is important. I know we had students go to homeschool because they could not keep their attendance here. And so we end up transitioning them to a program. So...
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see how that comes out.
Oh, we'll have, well, they'll have to change policies. We'll have, I mean, I'm guessing right now that we're working with Missouri State High School Activities Association and trying to figure out what this is gonna look like. Because effectively, we can't become a member of the Missouri State High School Activities Association. What it says in there, if you're a part of an organization that excludes this, then you're exempt from being able to participate in the activities next year. So...
How $50 million of general revenue that's going to parochial private schools?
It's definitely a non-separation of church and school.
I was gonna say, are those kids gonna be required to take MAP tests, EOCs, and those kind of things? That our kids using taxpayer funds are required?
Yeah, I'll have to do that.
Did it attach anything like that?
Any other discussion on the legislation?
I am glad that they funded it. Hopefully, he doesn't strike it.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I think we're ready for administrative reports.
Just a couple of great things to share. We had our track and field day on April 23rd. It was a day that we had storms roll through, so we got through one event and had to go sit on the bus for a while. I'm gonna look back at Ms. Brown because our high school students did a fabulous job. We had, high school buddies came. I think I shared at our last meeting, we had students call an application and share why they wanted to be buddies. And thank goodness, they did because they got some quality time on the bus with our athletes. We just kept having lightning delay after lightning delay after lightning delay. But our high school buddies kept the kids occupied and everybody had a smile on their faces. I don't think we had any issues at all the whole time. They finally moved us into the gym and they had a huge dance party. We had the mascots there, which was great. And then Casey Wolf showed up as a mascot. So it was dueling mascots for a while and the kids absolutely loved it. So kudos to Ms. Brown for that. But unfortunately, we didn't get to really participate in the track and field day, but we had fun anyway. So kids loved it. Nobody really complained that they didn't get to participate. It was a great day. But I'm gonna go back to our high school students do a fabulous job. I've said that all year, anytime they've helped us with anything. And we've had different groups of kids helping. So, you know, we had Fine Arts frenzy. We had students that were in Fine Arts. We've had baseball team, softball team. And then these kids just apply. And every time, it's been amazing. So kudos. Mr. and Mrs. Junior High School group, they do a great job. The other thing I wanted to share is that we have 58 students that are signed up for the pre-ETS, the pre-ETS. And all but two of our seniors with either 504s or IEPs are signed up for VR services. Those two refused. They didn't need those services. So that is great. Every time that we talk with pre-ETS or the VR services, they give kudos to the district because we have so many students signed up. And that goes back to, we have staff members that reach out to the parents. Any of you that have high school students know, kids aren't great at communicating. As parents, I'm a parent of a high school student. I trust that they'll tell me what's going on. Otherwise, you're gonna miss it. So the fact that we have Ms. Brown doing our reach out to parents and make sure that they understand the importance of this is fabulous. So that's a huge number. Last but not least, we are done with our gifted testing. So Special Services also does the gifted testing for Xena. That is completed. We changed the criteria for testing and we were able to complete those. We didn't have to go into summer school, so that's great. So we finished up. So kudos to those that helped with that. And then last but not least, I don't know that this is a celebration or more of a reason to cry, but we have two staff members retiring, two staff members that we're going to miss greatly. One is a speech pathologist, Sheila Switlick. I don't even know how many years she's been in the district, but she's wonderful. She is our go-to in anything speech and language. Has been here since I've been here and leaning on her. Then our other is Ms. Brown. Gonna miss her. She like wears every hat in the district. Dragon design, Special Olympics. She does speech and language for us on top of our transitional services. So getting those kids, those transition services that they need for life after high school. So we're gonna greatly miss. Those roles are gonna be really, really hard to replace. We do have people coming in, but when you have that many years of experience, this is gonna hurt. So congratulations to them, but it is a sad day for us when they walk out of those doors on Thursday. So any questions that you guys have for me about the report?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. I am excited to share some scores with you. If you had a chance to look at the academic summary, all of our scores for the school year were listed on that. And I wanted to just zone in on our building improvement plan goal. It stated at least 80% of our students placed on a reading success plan will meet the requirements for exiting an RSP by the end of the school year. So at the beginning of the school year, in all three grade levels, K1 and 2, we had 61 students who qualified for a reading success plan based on beginning of year benchmarks. And for us, that would be phonemic awareness and phonics, first to second grade. And then we move into fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension if we get into the older grades. And at the middle of the year, we went down to 41 students. And then at the end of the year, we are down to eight. So 3% of our students, 310 students total, have remained on an RSP. And that does include students who are receiving special education services in an area other than reading. If they do have an IEP in reading, they are exempt from an RSP unless they have a dyslexia diagnosis. And then they will have an RSP as well as an IEP in reading. So we have to get very critical in analyzing all of our students' needs and making sure that we're meeting all of those, which I cannot commend our staff members and our parents enough. Our parents bring the kids or allow them to stay for tutoring. And that's a huge commitment for families to be able to do that two days a week for the majority of the school year. And our staff members have signed up to be there every step of the way, whether it's in the classroom, during tier one instruction, or it's in tier two instruction, which we call our dragon time. Or it's in tier three, where Title pulls them out for very intensive instruction for 30 minutes a day or an after-school tutoring. But all of those efforts combined have resulted in some wonderful results. One other fact I wanted to share, you've probably heard a lot more about dyslexia in the last few years. I asked my Title reading teacher, Emily White, to dredge up some statistics for me because that's a topic that's very near and dear to my heart, not just as a reading teacher, but as a parent. And it's been a long haul for the state of Missouri to recognize kids with dyslexia and to get them the help that they need and not end up misdiagnosed or mislabeled in the school system. So with that legislation, we've been able to, and the science of reading, the letters training, all of that is all targeted towards identifying those kids and being able to hone in on what their needs are. We started it at Parkview in 2015 with the addition of Foundation's Phonics, which is an Oregon-Gillingham program created specifically for students with dyslexia or reading disabilities. And we've been able to just gradually see a positive change in our students' outcomes as a result of not just that program, but the other programs that we've implemented as well. Just in the last two years, since Mrs. White has been the reading, special reading teacher for Title, we've sent 61 letters allowing parents the information that their child does have tendencies. We're not medically, I guess you would say, we're not medical professionals, so we can't diagnose dyslexia. But we just let them know that they do have dyslexic tendencies. And then we track that and we work with them very intently. And we have had, in that time, in two years' time, eight students who have been diagnosed by a medical professional as a result of helping identify those kids. And some of them multiple years, because if we have them three years in a row, their parents might have received three letters. But we get to have those conversations with parents and help those parents know where to go, who to turn to, and what resources that they need to help their child. So we're very, very proud of that and hope to do more in that area in the future.
Any questions?
One thing. You say you're, in this chart below, documents, Parkview met this VIP goal. I wanna say you exceeded this goal. That's so amazing that in every single one of kindergarten, first, and second grade, that you exceeded that 80%. That's awesome. Congratulations to all of that. What is your, what is your plan for these students that were on reading success plans? And, or maybe still the ones that just are, these eight students? To get them through the summer or, or the, maybe I rephrase this. The ones that exited the program that you don't wanna have return. Is there like a plan that have you, do you think, like a summer, I don't know?
Every year, we devote a lot of time into trying to get those families to send their kids to summer school. That's plan number one. That's plan A, I guess you would say. If you can come to summer school, it can really help reduce that summer slide. I typically share a lot of resources online. I just shared some two nights ago that are free websites that parents can go and practice their child's reading fluency, phonics, phonemic awareness. All free, multiple sites. Mrs. White will send home packets with our students that are in tier three. We have posted on our school websites, all of our parent choice boards. Those don't get old. You can redo them year after year. And there's all, four grade levels, pre-pay, kindergarten, first, and second, that you can do with the kids. And those are amazing because it's every choice board that the teachers have used throughout the school year. So you can really keep up and work on those skills in small chunks. So it still seems like it's summer. You're not, you know, sitting them at the kitchen table for two hours every day, drilling and peeling. But it's still very meaningful work and it helps keep that summer slide from occurring.
I'm Dr. Janovic, and this is Burn. This morning, I started with fifth grade. We were looking at finalizing reading success plans for the year. This morning, I had sixth grade personnel, middle school, Dr. Utech, Dr. Ormsby come over and we talked about our transitions with our fifth to sixth grade reading success plans because it's a different beast from Parkview to CIS. And it's a different beast from CIS to CBMO. So that transition is vital to make sure we don't lose kids anywhere. So as kind of the day went along, I started taking some notes. So 28 of our students at CIS increased at least one reading level and some of them two. And the levels are based on instructional levels. So phonemic awareness is the lowest, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. So 28 of our students were able to increase at least one, if not two, levels, and we were excited about that. Seven of our students became what we call inactive, which means they will not continue their reading success plan next year. That does not mean I won't keep my eye on them in the fall. And the letter that I will send to parents with the updated reading success plan does indicate right now, we're considering it inactive, but we'll see what happens in the fall. And we encourage use of study island over the summer. We encourage use of reading. A lot of our students, and I'll get to this in a minute, are kind of hung up in the fluency issue. And I'll talk to you in a minute about that. And I've spoken before about the requirements for, to get off or to move past fluency, which are incredibly difficult. So I'll talk about that in a minute. But I will send information home with parents so they know what to do. Dr. Janovic, and then every time, has created multiple strategies for each of these levels that we send them to parents every time that we send updates, which is first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and end of the year. So I will continue to send those to parents as well. So they'll have options that they can work on with their children as they see fit over the summer. As Dr. Ormsby talked about, students with dyslexia will always be required to have a reading success plan. CIS currently has nine students that have been diagnosed with dyslexia. Interesting fact, zero of those students are fifth graders. Two of those students are fourth graders. Seven of those students are third graders. I just thought that was interesting. And as she said, as dyslexia is kind of more and more getting in the forefront of people's knowledge, more diagnoses are happening based on, just based on knowledge. So we're happy that we can have that information and address the kids with their reading disabilities in a better way. So that was interesting. Okay, so fun fact, not so fun, but fun fact. 16 of my students from today are what I call hung up on the fluency goal. We can't seem to get them past that to vocabulary comprehension. 10 of those 16 are fifth graders. And you guys have heard me say that I don't believe that our benchmark requirement of 160 words a minute is realistic or relevant. Because I don't want a child reading 160 words a minute because they're not understanding what they're reading, right? So if the goal is quick, maybe I can get there. If the goal is reading and understanding what we're reading, that's different. Okay? Those are two kinds of different goals. So I was talking to Dr. Ormsby today because I'm like, I'm so frustrated that our kids read well. They're accurate, like 99% accurate. They're reading 120, 130, even 140 words a minute. But we're hung up and we can't get off of the reading success plan based on those fluency, fluency goals. So as we were talking, she sent me some information from Reading Rockets, which is actually referenced in letters training that all of our teachers have had as a good support material for students and teachers to use. So at the 50th percentile from their research, so in the fall currently, our start oral reading fluency benchmark in the fall for fifth grade, and I'm not going to fourth and third, fifth grade only, 134 words a minute. The research says 121 words a minute would be relevant. In the winter, our current goal for fifth grade is 149 words a minute. I don't mean words a minute, words read correctly in the minute. Okay, I should preface that. And the research is showing 133. In the spring, as you know, 160 words read... In the spring, as you know, 160 words read correctly in one minute is our STAR Renaissance CVM goal, and the research is showing 146 words per minute. So I say all that to say, kids are working hard, teachers are working hard. I believe our kids are reading at grade level, obviously. And there we are, there we sit. So when I say I have a hard time getting them off, I have a hard time getting them off once they qualify in the fluency area. Norms over time do change a little bit, but that's a lot. So students are doing well, teachers are doing well. There's great pieces in place. Our Title personnel are phenomenal. Our teachers are doing outstanding things with kids. Our kids are working incredibly hard. I will say, taking MAP earlier this year, and NWA and STAR later, I believe will give us greater information from MAP, but I will tell you, by the time they got to the end of NWA and STAR, they were tired. We started the first week of April, and I still have a couple of kids that aren't finished. So, and we're May 20th. Anyway, so that was kind of my information that I wanted to share in addition to the board report. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have a question. So a couple of years ago, we decided to move to a different way of approaching reading, and we did away with AR testing.
Yes, amen.
And I was curious about how you think that's going, because we now have.
Yeah, so this is interesting. I met with fifth grade yesterday, a representative from each class that the teacher chose for me, and I had them do two stars in a wish. So what are two things at CIS you would never want me to change? What's one thing you wish could go different if I had control of it, right? So like having recess all day, not really. Right? So if I had control of it, what is something you want me to do? One of, one of the fifth graders, and we didn't do AR this year at all, we didn't do AR last year at all, she said, "Thank you for not making us do AR." We're two years into it, and she's still thankful for it. And I said, "Well, thank you for saying that," because it was kind of off my mind, right? So AR is a Renaissance program. As a mom, I can talk to you as a mom that has children go through AR, and as an administrator, it is not an accurate, in my opinion, not an accurate representation of how students read, right? So it gives them a reading level, but it will also ask comprehension questions based on little minute parts of the story that mean absolutely nothing to the theme, to the, nothing, right? So you can miss that, and it'll look like you either didn't read the book, or your reading level's lower, and that's really not the case. So in my opinion, book talks, so you can have that conversation one-on-one with the child, the things that we're doing with continuous monitoring of students, that's how we see where they are reading. So it would be a hard sell forever for me to agree to AR. My teachers would say she'll never agree to it, and they're probably right. But it's, I don't feel like what AR was given us was what we actually needed. Now, if you don't know teaching reading, or don't know what it's actually, what those results actually mean, it probably does look beneficial, but from the internal aspect, it is not. As a mom, I had many nights of crying girls in my house, because I knew they read the book, and they couldn't pass the test because it would ask them something ridiculous. So I had, you know, kind of that, that component of it too, with very good readers. So I do not miss it and would not go back.
So how do we know? I know when you have the conversations, but do they have like a goal of, you need to read two books a month, or do we do book reports? Or how do we know that the kids that are just good readers aren't not reading?
Oh, well, yeah, so, yeah, fake reading looks real, looks real. It really does. Yeah, so when, when students are reading within their books, we have tasks or something for them to do at the end of it, right? So like, if teachers are conferencing with kids, they're going to ask about whatever the skill is for that day, I want you to, you know, give me a sticky note of inference for at the end of the, at the end of the reading period, whatever that is. If it's just kind of reading time because they just finished, we don't follow up with that necessarily on that pre-reading book. But if it's something to do directly with reading instruction, there's always follow-up from what the child read that day, that the teacher will know what they did. And it's not always just page number, right? Because some kids read slower, so we can't say read 10 pages if it's not realistic to everybody. So that's just knowing your kids, just teachers knowing the kids.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hello. I don't have a whole lot, and like usual, I try to keep it short and sweet. So I do want to have a, I do have a couple shout-outs to Dr. Utech and our school counselor, Ms. Crowley, for MAP testing, and they get us organized, ready to go, have all the information that we need, prepared for us and for our teachers, so it's as smooth as possible. And so I'm very appreciative of them for that. Our RTI program, I was running through some numbers just a few days ago in our, kind of our final data dump. Last year, for 2023-24, we had 2,100 unique skills mastered within our RTI program. This year, we almost tripled it. We had 6,229 unique skills mastered. So I thought that was a cool number when we looked across the board and looked at the data that we took in our NWEA scores. We noticed that we did see improvement, and our kids were improving, which was huge for us. Now we want to take that to the next level and start working on higher achievement. Now that we have that data, we've, we've found some, some ways that we can incorporate it. The other thing, kind of a bigger celebration for us, at the beginning of the year, we started this, we used, we wanted to continue to promote reading with, with our kids, and that was something, that was important for us. So we had to track their minutes, and they track it through a program, a web-based program called Beanstack. At the beginning of the year, we had no idea what to expect. We had a goal of maybe 250, maybe 100,000 was early on, a goal for like a quarter. And then we quickly realized that was, we were going to go above that, and we ended up getting to 969,000 minutes, we're at grade six through eight. So I thought that was huge for us. This, this year's been a big growth year. It was probably one of the toughest years I've ever had as an educator, but probably my most rewarding year, just because I had to do some things that I was not used to, and I had a lot of help along the way and a lot of encouragement, but it was just a fun year for us. So that's all I got.
Mr. Stickle?
Yeah.
You are a class act, and you've been fun to watch, and going to church with you and seeing you in your building. You have built relationships with your staff and your teachers and your students, and that's been very, very fun to watch. And you're, I'm just, you're going to be missed, so good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations in your retirement. This is Mr. Stickle's last meeting. This isn't?
That's it.
I was going to ask if this was it, or if we go one more time. We don't get you in June.
Nope. This is it. Nope, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing yet, but we're, we have got some things on the table. We'll see. I'm moving back to Iowa, and I'm going to be, I'm excited about that, being around my family, and went back to graduation this last weekend, and it was really fun just to be around my family. I'm 28 years away, I haven't got to be around them very much. And so we've sacrificed a lot to be here for our girls and for our grandkids, and so it was just, it was really fun. It was really cool to be back and be around everybody, so.
You've brought a lot of joy and inspiration to our community.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've had a lot of great people to work with, and it's been very enjoyable, so.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a few celebrations, not including my board report, obviously. Thank you all for a good Friday night, windy Friday night. A little stressful at the beginning, but the wind died down and ended up having a great night. Wow, it's been a busy month at the high school, going all the way back to the end of April with prom, and then all the way up to graduation Friday, and then today, we actually had our first post-COVID community project day. Some of that, the projects we did around the community and around the school, we cleaned up our gym, got the bleachers swept, had a crew that went out to the golf course, and obviously with the big storm last night, that was well, well appreciated. Did some weed pulling in the rock beds at the high school. We had a group that went up to McCorville Park. We had a group that went up to Third Street Fusion and did some painting and some cleanup up there, rec park. We had a couple teachers with our Stuko that did a district-wide water bar, so they were running around delivering waters to teachers. More facilities cleanup. We had a group that went to the Veterans Home, came over here to Goodrich to do some work on the stage, First Baptist Church cleanup. We had a group that went to the Cameron Police Department Training Facility and did some landscaping up there. Football field and track, picking up leaves, raking leaves, picking up trash. We had a group that Mr. Jennings and his crew power washed the sidewalk and the, I call it the landing area, outside the concession stand, baseball softball area cleanup, and then Mrs. Kasselman and her interact project at the skate park. So very busy this morning, very thankful the weather held out. I was a little nervous last night. I said, "It's going to be an up-to-the-minute decision," and thankfully I woke up bright and early this morning, looked at my hourly, and we were good to go. Last, oh, a couple weeks ago, we had three students that signed apprenticeships through Hilliard Tech Technical School. Michael Bashir signed with Altech, and his focus was in electronics technology. Nathan Turner, welding technology, also with Altech, and then Taren Hearn, welding technology with Summit Truck Body. So super excited for those kids, taking advantage of those apprenticeships through Hilliard. And the last one I'm super excited about, and I'm going to have to give credit to Mrs. Bynum, I took your write-up, so. I'm going to read you, she's going to post it tomorrow, and she will also post pictures. Mrs. Pyatt created a collage, so we'll post that all on social media from our project day. It just says, "Cameron High School freshman, Olivia Carnot, who attended the youth and government." We talked about that a couple months ago, three months ago, I've lost, I've slept since then. In Jeff City, she was notified by Ken, and I'm probably going to say his name wrong, so I apologize, Kim Hussey, Hussey, Director of Civic Engagement for Missouri and Kansas YMCA Youth and Government. Last week, a version of the bill she wrote for YAG has made it through the General Assembly, passed by the Missouri State Legislature, and is on Governor Keough's desk as we speak, waiting to be signed into law. Olivia's bill, which was an act to eliminate the Missouri sales tax on feminine products, is part of a larger bill, House Bill 594, which includes various tax exemptions and cuts, including language to make diapers, feminine hygiene products, and incontinence products exempt from state sales tax beginning August 28, 2025. So we are extremely, extremely proud of her and her effort with that. So on that note, that's all I got. A lot of celebrations.
And kudos to you for your attendance in your building.
Yes. Well, that's not kudos, that's, Dr. Lanigan, nice job. If you're watching. He, yes.
That's excellent.
And obviously the kids and parents, but he, that was, he was bound to term, and we were going to make it this year. So still got a couple days left, we'll see what the final for our APR, but yes, regardless, he has done a remarkable job, and kudos to him and our kids, so.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any questions on the activities report?
All right, well, I really don't have to say much, they did it all. So just really some great stuff. You know, Dr. Ormsby and Mrs. Rucker really hit the first part of letters training and how we've overly appreciated that training, and it has helped kids, it has helped teachers, it has moved a lot of students to be readers, and I just really appreciate the teachers, that time commitment. I think I shared it in there, it's just, it's a lot. It is like a college course, so. Just a little bit on the NWEA charts, I like to put colors and stuff in there, but what does it really mean? Let me give you just a quick overview for math. That's the first part that was shared, kind of goes over growth and achievement. Remember, those are our two areas, growth from the starting point to the endpoint, so a student competing against themselves, and then achievement, a student competing against the group. So one of the things that I wanted to note, math, we have four grade levels with both high growth and high, and/or high achievement. Out of the nine grade levels tested, seven grade levels were at or above the 50% threshold for achievement, and then six of the grade levels were at or above 50% for growth. So that's more than in previous years. And then switching to reading, we had, out of seven grade levels tested, there were six grade levels that were at or above the 50% threshold in achievement, and two were at or above the 58th percentile in growth, so just making those gains. If you look at the first grade district benchmark, I just wanted to point out, I think it's pretty unheard of, that 100 of our students are on grade level, and 16 are just in that zone that we've just got a lot of time to make up. So just seeing just some great stuff happening with our literacy efforts and math as well. Overall trend for the STAR data that you see there, that second set of data is that with each class over the years, you see the growth in the blue and the green, and the reduction of the red and the yellow, and that's exactly what we want to see. Other than that, one last thing that I, Mrs. Bynum kind of hit on, is we've been really working together as a community, learning community, to come up with what we really want our students to be and be able to do when they go from pre-K all the way through. And so these five areas were a labor of love, correct? Those administrators still in the building or in the room, but we definitely came up with these five, growth mindset, engaged, reflective, problem solver, and collaborator. So this is just a sneak peek, you're going to hear more about it in the poll. And so anyway, what questions do you have for me?
There was one change in the Senate Bill 68 where it, I believe, it, like we, it's not on these, but where we usually go advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. What test is that, or what?
That is the MAP test.
Okay. And they added grade level.
We've talked a little bit about that, and yes, that will, there'll be more information about that, but yes, that is because there's a misconception by a lot of us in general. I mean, we just kind of all think it, if they're basic, they're not a grade level. That's really not true. And in fact, if you look at the EOC data, it's always been reported that if they are basic and above, they are proficient, and they can be grade level. So more information to come on that. Again, we have to follow, I'm really happy that that guideline came out. Because we think basic is just the basic. Well, basic is the basic proficiency, right? And then you go to proficient, which is, it's all gray right now, and I can't wait to see more because it's been difficult to explain.
Right. I just was thinking, was highlighting that this was a good change that we believe.
It is a good change, because you can't, we say on grade level, but then our safe test is basic or proficient, and then it splits it in half, well, really, which is it? So thank you for that. Yeah. More to come on that.
Good deal.
Anything else?
Okay, real quick, before we get to the patron agenda items, we had moved 12M to non-action, we're going to do that, so 12M is policies that were in the packet, which we will take up again next time, so I just wondered if there was any discussion of those policies before we moved into the next quarter. Okay. So now we move on to our patron comments. So this is the time when residents who have requested to address the board have time to come and speak to us. We have three individuals who are on the agenda, so if, as I call your name, if you would, please turn to podium, introduce yourselves, and confirm your residence of the district. In about five minutes, we have to be pleased to observe the board as your addressing board. Mr. Lee and you are first.
Thank you. I'm Dan Landy, I live in the district, and I'm a resident. So I'd like to start, well, tonight, I'm going to start, I'd like to speak about security cameras in classrooms. Before I start, I'd like to also begin with prayer, please. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in two temptations, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you. It's kind of like Yogi Bear wants that deja vu all over again. Here I am again, talking about security cameras in classrooms. Tonight, though, I'll present some information in support of the security cameras. And I'd like to clarify some things, too, in case there's any misconception. I'm speaking of closed-circuit TV, CCTV, it's the acronym. It's, it's what banks use in, you know, professional buildings. It's an in-house camera system, it's not accessible from outside of this school, so you know, be it internet hacking or anything like that. So I'm talking CCTV, it's probably what you already have here now. And obviously, there must be some merit to the cameras, because you already have them in certain parts of the school, right? Even on buses, but not on, not in classrooms. And so that's always been a big question mark for me, and I know Matt Robinson and I have talked about that before, and it has, he made some comments about having to do with student privacy and such. I don't know a lot about that, but I'm sure that there are workarounds for that. Again, I firmly believe where there's a will, there's a way, no matter what you're talking about. Everyone benefits from security cameras in school. The students benefit, the teachers benefit, parents benefit. I don't see a downside to this whatsoever. And especially now, since you mentioned that there's not going to be any cell phones in class. in class because of this new law that passed, even more reason to put security cameras in the classrooms, because now the students don't have access to their own little individual security cameras. So, things to think about. I believe it'll improve student and staff behavior, right? I mean, who wouldn't behave differently if, you know, if they, knowing that they're being watched, that they're being monitored? The best thing about the cameras, though, they create an objective record, right, indisputable, because it is what it is. And I've got some examples of that. One example is Mr. Heath Gilbert over here. As you know, because you banned him from school, and he was banned, falsely accused of wrongdoing at a parent-teacher conference. And falsely, because he video-recorded his interactions with some of the teachers, and the same teachers that later complained on him and said that he was inappropriate. You wouldn't know that, because you didn't review the video. The video speaks for itself, it exonerates Mr. Gilbert, but none of you, you voted seven to zero to ban him from school without even looking at the video. Again, another example, I think, where cameras would would benefit, involving former ELA teacher Ms. Dick, right? We know that she was caught teaching about transgenderism in class.
Mr. Leeny?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, we would ask that you talk about concerns with teachers and students in classroom.
Well, she's not even, she's not an ordinary teacher, she's not employed here anymore.
She is employed here at this moment, and she is a teacher.
Okay.
Her record as a teacher during her employment is still her, regardless of the staff.
I didn't understand that, okay. Well, speaking of her, speaking of her, but not about her, I'd like to continue by saying that she was caught, again, on a video, open video, not a concealed video, an open video by Mr. Gilbert during a parent-teacher conference.
Mr. Landy, could you please stay on topic? You're not talking about security.
I haven't been talking about video cameras in classrooms. Had you had a video camera, a security camera.
You're talking about Mr. Gilbert's camera on his body, you're not talking about security.
Had you had, okay, okay, I'll retract that statement, Your Honor. I'll retract that statement, Counsel.
Move on to security cameras in the classroom.
Can I get my 15 seconds back, ma'am?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so, had you had a security camera in that classroom, regardless of what conversation occurred, regardless of what reading material, teaching material was strewn out about the desk, you would have known, the school district would have known, superintendent would have known what his teacher was up to. Again, it's, this is not a dig on the teachers, or parents, or students, not anyone in particular per se, it's a general argument about behavior. Thank you, sir. So, in summary, I'm wrapping this up. In summary, you already have cameras in the classrooms, and obvious, or in the school district, obviously, they work, or you wouldn't have them. You have security cameras, they are secure, CCTV, it's been proven, they benefit everyone, so it's not, you know, doesn't provide preferential advantage to anyone. I'm almost done. And finally, I suggest that district use them on a trial basis in the classroom, right? Set them up, run them for a year, monitor them, you know, and come back and assess them at the end of the school year, and see if you've got an improvement in the classroom. I mean, what does it hurt to try?
Andy, your time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Landy, your time is up.
Are there any other questions? You sure? Okay. And just so you know, Mark Carr didn't hook me up.
Mr. Landy, please. Next on the agenda is Mrs. Andy Brown.
Hi, I'm Andy Brown, I am a resident and teacher of the district. Tonight, I stand before you at my final school board meeting as Cameron R1 educator. After 18 years of teaching in the district, I think I've seen it all, the triumphs, the challenges, the moments that made me question my sanity. Now that I'm retiring, I figured this was the perfect time to finally tell you exactly what I think of this district. The truth is, it's been an honor to be a dragon. Cameron schools are more than just buildings and classrooms, they're a foundation, a family, a legacy, and I am proud to say that I am not only an educator here, but also a lifetime dragon, a CHS graduate, and a parent of two daughters who have walked the same halls that I did. This district has shaped me, and it shaped them, instilling values of perseverance, excellence, and community. Have I always liked or agreed with everything during my tenure here or as a parent? No. But that's the nature of education, learning, change, and, well, life. There were times I had questions, concerns, or a different opinion. When my perspective differed, I made sure to voice my concerns. I didn't always get the resolution I hoped for, but I took the time to consider that my way might not be the best way. Ultimately, I trusted the decisions were made thoughtfully, with the best interests of our schools, educators, and most importantly, our students in mind. In the end, that shared commitment to doing what was right for our students was what mattered most. Serving here has been a great honor. The support, collaboration, and dedication of this district have empowered me to help students navigate their futures, find their strengths, and step into their own successes. Seeing their growth, celebrating their milestones, and knowing that I had a hand in their journey has been incredibly rewarding. But what has truly made my time here special are the relationships, the connections built with students, colleagues, and parents over the years. Every conversation, every moment shared, every challenge faced together, has strengthened my belief in the power of education and community. Watching students grow, seeing them step confidently into the world, and knowing that I was able to support them along the way, have been the most fulfilling part of this journey. The friendships I've formed with my fellow educators, the collaboration with families, and the shared commitment to making a difference have made me, have made every day meaningful. So, tonight, I simply want to say thank you. Thank you to the school board for your leadership. Thank you to my colleagues for your friendship and commitment, and thank you to the vast majority of Cameron R1 community for making this district a place of support and belonging. I also want to extend my deepest gratitude to all my supervisors and administrators, those who have guided me, supported me, and challenged me to grow. Your encouragement has shaped my journey, providing me with opportunities to learn, expand my knowledge, and make a meaningful impact, allowing me to become the educator I am today. While I may be retiring, I will always be a dragon. Thank you.
Thank you for your ears with us. I miss you.
I am Heath Gilbert. Recently, I had a member of the public ask why I dig into records and so strongly scrutinize what the district does. To answer simply, because the district has one set of rules for the public and another for the district. This form that you require us to fill out is a perfect example. In what appears to be an attempt to stifle and chill speech, the district has deviated from approved board policy, and now requires speakers to make their cellphone number and their home address a public record as a condition of addressing the board. The district now refuses to follow the board policy requiring a meeting with Mr. Robinson. Instead, we are required to complete this speech-stilling form. This is not policy. The district doesn't like the viewpoint of some residents. You dislike criticism and uncomfortable topics being discussed in open meetings. So, you placed hurdles on our path that discourage us from exercising our civil rights. You created this form and outright ended the public comment period under items for consideration. Why? Because we use it as an opportunity to be critical of this district and this body. The district truly does not like free speech. In August, at a board meeting, this body discussed and voted to change Policy C140. Specifically, you amended the policy to ensure that public comment for items under consideration would be protected. Jackie spoke against removing public comments. She said it is important that the community have the opportunity to address the board. Andy proposed a five, a fifth option, which was ultimately approved, that allowed the three-minute comment period to remain. It's gone now. And you made the motion to accept Andy's amendment to the policy. Ryan, you seconded it before it passed unanimously. Clearly, you all agreed speech is important. Why, then, do you ignore the comment period, comment period being removed? I agree with Jackie, it is important that the community have the ability to address public bodies with their concerns. Why, then, is the district ignoring policy and no longer allowing public comment? Why is the district discouraging members of the public from speaking to the board? In just a few weeks' time, the district responded and banned me from the school for an alleged violation of district property. In the past six months, I have repeatedly been in contact with the board and the district about these concerns with the intentional and blatant ignoring of policy relating to this form. Not one of you has responded to my concern. Twice now, the district has alluded that I am a threat to staff, students, the community, and school property. After hearing that, how many members of the community are going to want to complete this form and make their phone number and address a public record I can access? Jackie, in your most recent run for school board, you famously held up a stack of records I requested from the district. You bemoaned how my request interferes with the education of children. How many thousands of views did that get? How many of those viewers would be unwilling to complete this form for fear I might do another records requesting me that information? Your form is not policy. Requiring cellphone and home addresses as a condition of addressing this body will chill speech. But that is the intended purpose of this form, along with the end, putting the, an end to the public comment period under items for consideration. This is an intentional response because of the topics we bring up at these meetings. You don't like our speech, known as viewpoint discrimination, so you appear to ignore these policy violations. Stacy, you mentioned during a previous meeting on the student handbook, that if something is in the student handbook, it must be enforced. You also mentioned that if it isn't going to be enforced, it shouldn't be in the handbook. The board agreed with you and said the handbook should be enforced. This body should have the same standard for policy, and not just for members of the public. Staff are contractually obligated to follow policy. Why, then, do you ignore their violations? You certainly didn't do that for me. Selective enforcement lends to the validation of complaints for retaliation and discrimination. Out of curiosity, has the district informed you board members that each time I am forced to not submit my phone number and my address, that I'm submitting yours as well?
Miss Offrech, if anyone's in the chat, just briefly, before you have, just a brief discussion about cameras in the classroom, if you could. This, Mr. Landy, I think he's brought this to us, and we've had this on our agenda, May of 23, June of 23, October of 23, November of 24, and May of 25. So, this is the fifth time that we've heard his request, and so, I've done a lot, two years, to think about this, and think about this. I haven't had one parent or one teacher approach me requesting that we add cameras to the classroom. I know in the past, we've had a discussion about the FERPA concerns, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, which gives students the right to privacy in their education record. So, I'm very concerned about that if we put cameras in the classroom, because that's where their education takes place. I also have thought a lot about this, I think putting cameras in the classroom would interfere with learning. I think students would pause to have open discussions and critical thinking if they know, if they know that they're being watched. I think they would, I think the constant surveillance would stiften, stifle their education, and I think it would just chill their free speech and their, their ability to discuss their education topics. So, I, I've thought about this a lot. To me, it feels very big brother, feels nanny state, where government's watching our students, and I'm just, from my perspective, I'm not willing to take that approach in the classroom. And like I said, I've not had one student or parent or teacher approach me and request that they be watched while they're learning. So, I also, I mean, I've thought a lot about this, the financial strain on the district, just to install, to buy the equipment, to install the equipment, to maintain, and then just store the footage, would be, I don't even know, I think we have to hire additional staff just to store, I mean, to capture the footage, to store the footage.
Did I supplement that?
Sure.
I thought about the same thing, and I asked some questions, and an estimate, without audio and without high resolution, to put cameras in our 135 or so classrooms would be approximately $200,000, and that's with no audio, and that's with no high res. So, what you're talking about in terms of cost, that's the low end, and that doesn't take into account the stat you were just talking about.
I, we heard earlier about an $8,000 bill for redaction of records, and I can't imagine if somebody wanted a request, you know, I want to see the video from XYZ classroom on, you know, April 31st through May 15th, the amount of redaction would have to take blurring kids' faces and covering up audio and things like that. I don't think we're at that point in our society where we're ready to have government surveil our students at every point in their, and I, we're not at the point where we can take their privacy and their education record away from them. So, I won't ever advocate for that. We've, like I said, we've listened to this for two years, and I thought it was just time to, I wanted to communicate to the board where I stood on that topic, and I'm just not ready to move forward if that, for the privacy issues, the, all of the things that we mentioned.
I also noticed this topic we've seen before, and I had some conversations with some teachers from all of our buildings, and the themes were very similar to what you just raised. FERPA violations were a very big concern, accommodations made to students, being able to sit on a camera, seeing students who leave the class for a special accommodation. Purpose of the rooms is not always a classroom, sometimes it's a private meeting room, it can be used as a lactation room, those classrooms are used for changing rooms for opposing sports teams sometimes. I know that that would be the case for our show choir, and they use all these classrooms. So, those were some of the things that were raised. They talked about costs, there was concern about the impact on getting teachers to apply for our jobs if, if we had cameras in our classrooms, which is difficult for any school district right now, there, the number of teachers available is sometimes not enough to fill all the positions. The big brother over the teachers was mentioned, storage issues, they mentioned it would not deter bullying, because the kids would know where the cameras were, and they're just going to go where the cameras are not, and they're going to go on their cell phones, or the bathrooms, or the buses, and so, and the buses do have cameras, and sometimes it's hard to see what's going on on the buses, too. The kids have already voiced their fear of being recorded, and if the school were to record them, the impact on learning was another concern, making them feel comfortable in a classroom. When you have a camera on you, is, they were afraid of chilling impact, it would, they were afraid it would build the stress between teachers and parents, because the parents can request the footage, that takes away the dialogue between the parent and the teacher. There was a comment that teachers get certifications, and they are qualified to teach these children, they go through high-level background checks, there are administrators and other teachers in anonymous classrooms a lot, there are other kids in the classroom, so you do have lots of other people around at all the times. So... So, you know, those were the common themes I heard from these teachers who were concerned. I could see, I mean, I, I do understand what Mr. Landy is saying, but I would say, in taking into account the whole picture, I, I think that the, the costs of having cameras in the classroom outweigh any benefits that I can see.
I've said from the beginning, since I started serving on the board, one of the, the best things we could do is graduate a dragon, who is a critical thinker. And so to become a critical thinker, you have to investigate, evaluate, and talk about difficult subjects. And I do not want to chill that experience for our students. I think that we have very qualified professional staff, and if we have an issue, we have been known, and we have the history of taking care of that issue. And so I don't think we put a blanket over everybody, because there might be something that happens, a one-time incident or something like that. That, that's not just here. Incidents happen in every profession across.
I made some notes, too, thinking that, I think cameras would change the dynamic between teachers and students, create an atmosphere of mistrust or fear rather than one of open communication and learning. Students may feel less likely to participate, take risks, or, or express themselves freely if they know they're being reported, and teachers might be, feel constrained or second-guessed, which could negatively impact morale and job certification, or job satisfaction. I don't think, we've talked about bullying, and that this would help it, but cameras won't, you know, we won't get to the root cause of bullying. So, and that's only done by relationship building and counseling, classroom management training, and the cost that, it would cost to install these cameras, I would much rather see go into personal development and training and mental health resources to get, that would get at the root cause of that bullying.
Dr. Robinson, any local schools in our area, do you know?
I don't know if they know.
So I look at this from the standpoint, from the teacher side of this. I mean, we're having trouble filling our staff, right? I mean, national shortage. So if we're going to go out and create something that nobody else has, as far as they're going to be watched all the time, is that, do you believe that that is something that we are going to get more applications to have that, or less?
Probably less, yeah.
So is that, so that situation won't help us to fulfill our needs of our students to move forward?
Yes, it would not.
I mean, that's, so that's where my mind goes. We have to be able to fulfill the, our teacher needs so we can teach our kids. So if we have open holes everywhere, because we want to watch them, we want to have the ability to watch, we're really not helping ourselves any. So, I mean, that's kind of where my mindset is.
We have ways for students and for teachers to notify us if they're having an issue in the classroom, that we have very in-tune administrators and very approachable administrators. We also have anonymous ways to report the board report form online and different things that they can do if they don't feel comfortable. So we have avenues, we have windows and doors, you know, we've done a lot of security things in that manner as well for our students and protect our students. I'm, I'm just not, just not in the, not thinking in the United States of America, we want to just start surveilling everything. That's my thoughts. Thanks for letting me have that discussion.
Why do you have them all over the classrooms, or the other parts of the school?
We are moving on, but before we move on, I would like to just highlight the public comment to the board policy, C-140P, and that is the policy Mr. Gillett was talking about. And just so, we have the policy language in front of us, and we know what it says. On the policy to meet with the superintendent, the policy says that the resident, if they would like to put an item on the agenda, can make a written request, and that if there is no meeting with the superintendent, the meeting is required, but if there is no meeting, then if they have their written request within, in time, they get on the agenda. So that policy does not actually require a meeting with the superintendent, and the board has directed Dr. Robinson that we would rather see this form, and so in lieu of the meeting, there is form in place, which does satisfy the written requirement of that policy, and it is the school district's intent with the policy to collect the information so that we can make sure that we publicly notice this correctly, and that we've got transparency in our meetings, and that people can come when they're interested about something we can talk about. So that form is in compliance with that policy. It does not prohibit us from putting that form in place. So just so the public knows, that's policy C-140P, if you'd like to go read it. So I think we are ready to move on to items for consideration.
Yeah, I think our first one is the memorandum of understanding. Officer Miller's here, or our police chief for the city. I'll give a little brief, and then Officer Miller can kind of fill in, but here a couple months ago, I guess, maybe a couple weeks ago, I'm trying to think, but we, we started looking at this, our memorandum of understanding a little bit. First of all, we wrote this a couple of years ago. We didn't have the same police chief, we didn't have the same sheriff in Clinton County, DeKalb County, and we had Cheney and Caldwell as well. So we all got together, started looking at it, just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, and what this allows us to do is just have the relationship with the police when there's certain investigations that go to the police, or if there are certain situations, so I'll let Officer Miller talk a little bit about it.
Officer Palmer, you're more welcome to come out here if you'd like. First of all, Mr. Erdman stole my thunder earlier. We want to thank the school district for allowing 20, and I think we were like the, top place today. We had over 20-plus students come down to our new police department training center, which is on the south side of town. First of all, we, we provided them with six dozen of donuts and 100 donut holes. We gave them some water, we had some bananas, stuff like that. They, and this was for the Community Service Day, which Mr. Erdman went over, they went all over town. We, we had them pulling weeds, we had them cleaning up around our, our building, and then we had some mulch delivered, and they, they spread mulch around the flower gardens and the trees down there. If you're not familiar, we, we acquired the stage on 69. It's MOU between the school district, the sheriff's departments, and the City of Cameron Police Department. The new MOU is seven pages long, that includes the signature pages on the back. So basically, what an MOU is, it's a memorandum of understanding. It's a, it's a formal, non-binding agreement between two or more parties outlining their intentions, roles, and objectives. It's often used to establish a framework for cooperation and future agreements. So the best descriptions for an MOU, they're designed, it's a designed document of mutual understanding and expectations, what we would expect from them and what they would expect from us. The City of Cameron is their own police department, the Cameron School District is their own police department. I can't tell them what to do, they're not going to tell me what to do, kind of like Clinton County Sheriff's Department, they're their own, I'm, we're not going to tell each other what to do. This is to come together, work together. If I have the resources that the school doesn't have, we're going to allow the school to use our resources for investigations for their part, unless it's a case that we have to take first state statute. MOUs, we use MOUs in law enforcement for various things, interagency cooperation. What this does, it defines roles and responsibilities and joint investigations or operations. School resource officer programs, it's to outline the relationship between law enforcement schools, including the SRO duties and responsibilities. Also, a cooperation, again, with our other agencies, it's to define how different agencies will work together. In this situation, be local law enforcement and post-secondary education. The Cameron Police Department, we've always, since I've been here, I've been here 21 years, we have always worked closely with the Cameron School District. We want to make sure that we have a safe environment for our students and our staff that are in these schools. We've held trending topics with the school district, from simple fire drills to the horrific events that we've all seen around the country. We've had active shooter trainings there, they've been real life. Mr. Gurneer's on the fire department, he's been into some of these trainings. We've had teachers that have been scared after these trainings, but we wanted, we portrayed this as, this is what could happen, okay? Mostly, if you see police cars around the schools in the mornings and in the afternoons, since I became chief, I've even put, with the permission from Dr. Robinson, I've put police officers on school buses, because we get a lot of police officers running school bus arms. I got one on the bus, I've got a car sitting close, if one runs it, that, my police car stops. So we started off with education first, you know? Most of the time, it's on walnut, they don't know that they have to stop, since there's a center turning. So also on this, I've implemented internal changes in my department for transparency between the public, the school, you know, vice versa. Let's see. We have, my agency has multiple MOUs. We have it with Missouri State Highway Patrol, we have it with the Clinton County Sheriff's Department, we have it with the United States Veterans Amission, the police force for the veterans' doctor's office up here on the north side of town, the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office, Caldwell County Sheriff's Office, the ACCD 911 District, the Northwest Missouri Cyber Crimes Task Force, Northwest Missouri Drug Strike Force, Davis County Sheriff's Office, the ambulance district, the school district. I presented all this information three times to my city council. We had a discussion first, and I had a first and second reading for an ordinance. Last night, my city council supported, supported this and passed it 5 to 0 on the second final reading, and I just want to finish up with saying that my department also supports this MOU, school district. Does anybody have any questions for me?
This MOU has been reviewed by council and drafted in accordance with Missouri law.
This MOU has been drafted by the RSMO 162215, and it was revived, it was looked over by my city attorney. And it wouldn't have went through my council if it hadn't went through my attorney.
Thank you.
We've had this arrangement, I think, since the summer of '22, and it's always been a great working relationship, and I appreciate, I appreciate everybody looking out for our kids, that's the purpose.
And I just want to make sure, you know, I, I meant, so the internal changes that I made at my department is for transparency, and that was, that was just instituted probably about three or four months ago.
Is the memorandum of understanding similar to the one that, I mean, were there any drastic changes?
There was, there was no drastic changes. We put more in it. Again, it went from one page to seven pages with the, with the signature pages. It is a responsibility to the school district or the police department, if any of these cases, first-degree murder, voluntary manslaughter, involuntary manslaughter, rape, burglary, robbery, possession of a weapon, any of those cases, arson, anything like that, that they aren't to notify us, because then we're the agency that takes over that investigation. But they are going to co-investigate it with us.
State statute is very broad. What, what Chief Miller and the Cameron Police Department did is they took state statute and, and basically broke it down into a little bit smaller pieces and made it a little more understandable, and something, I guess, that, just more understandable.
So if there's something that falls within the statute, that's an active threat or issue, does this allow you to immediately respond and call them versus having to call them first?
So our department's job is to, if it reaches a certain level, regardless of what that level is, our primary job is to save life and lives. So we take care of what needs to be taken care of right then and there, and then we ensure the integrity of the scene, and then once Chief Miller and his department arrives on the scene, then Officer Brimmer and I, or our department, we would then step back, and then we would become a support role as, as opposed to the immediate role.
And my understanding is that state statute allows that specifically to happen?
Absolutely.
And there are specific carve-outs that say, school police department can handle these, and then if it rises, then it's that scenario?
And, and that's what we've put in here. And we, we've also, and I don't know if you've looked at it or seen it yet, we've also put in here that on fourth degree assaults, it also states that if, if the school district and the police department sign this agreement on fourth-degree assaults, the school police department can work that, those are misdemeanor assaults, so. And my council passes, so it'll be on the school district to see what they want to do on that one, so. I do have one final thing, it has nothing to do with the MOU. We have teamed up, the Cameron Police Department has teamed up with Life 88.5, it's a Christian radio station out of Kansas City. They go around to police departments and host snow cone with a cop. This is a youth program. In the past six years, they have given out 17,000 free snow cones. We are hosting that on June 5th at Rec Park. We're going to be in, they're going to give us a small area in the parking lot, so if the teachers can let the students know on June 5th from 4 to 6, come see us. Police, fire, EMS, we're going to have our swap vehicle there, ambulance, so everybody's going to be there, so it's all free. 88.5 is providing all of that, it's all free, we're going to provide the vehicles, some handouts and stuff like that, so.
And the pool will be open to some students?
The pool should be open, yes. We're just, they're going to give us a little corner, so. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
Chief Miller, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As I always, it always makes me happy, I guess, but happy's not the right word. It encourages me whenever I see Officer Brimmer and Officer Palmer walking around, it gives me a sense of pride and a sense of safety. When you're walking around, like, patrolling, you're not walking, you're patrolling, it's an act. So that, that gives me a sense of, of security, and it makes me know that you are there for our children, and in the mornings and in the afternoons, one of them, when I see your officers' cars on walnut in park, it does the same thing. So I just want to tell all of you that how much I appreciate the work that you do to keep our kids safe, our whole district safe, so.
Thank you.
I agree. I mean, I think that we can all see the working relationship that we already had, and I appreciate the time and effort that you and your department put in to create this, that way we can have something, something on paper that states where we are with each other. I think we can see that every morning, when we drop our kids off and when we pick them up. You do such a great job just interacting with the district itself. So, you know, kudos to you guys, appreciate the time, and thanks for coming this evening to explain all this to us.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
And thank you to the city council for their support as well.
Yes, I will last one though, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions about the MOU?
I make a motion. Oh, sorry. Were you making a motion? Make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding regarding law enforcement services that was just presented by the City of Cameron.
I have a motion by Ms. Sisai, and I have a statement by Ms. Speck, favor is your right hand. Okay, that passes? All right. I think the next B through J are all kind of the same grouping contracts, so if there are questions about those.
These are all contracts for special services.
Yes, for special services. Do you have questions?
Somebody asked for a question.
I know, I stay with those guys, what's the question?
I make a motion, maybe, and, or these contracts.
So I guess I'll present a question. From what I've seen, we've used all of these before. These are essentially re-upped in prior contracts to the renewals.
Everything except the speech contract with therapy, that would be a new one. We are losing, obviously, Sheila Swetlak is retiring, Andy Brown, who does language services, is retiring, and then we had a speech assistant, Paxton Mogul, she went back to school, so she could become a speech assistant, so we're losing, we're losing three. And we, there are nobody that, so at this point, we still need contracted services, because we have about, well, it's almost 200 students that might have to serve, we have to have some psychologists to do that, so.
Well, thank you for the clarity, just the way we were going to put that together. I think it, just to get it out there, that these are renewals, these are companies that we've dealt with, that we have very, we have had these, our comfort level lies with these companies, you know, we've got in the past, so.
And as a student, they have good relationships, they've done a great doc course, so. And now the students, they have good relationships, they've done a great doc course, so, and we have to.
300%.
I second the motion. So I have a motion to approve contracts B through J in a second. Any further discussion? If you want to pull those out. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Zenith Handbook?
Yeah. We're now required to start having a Zenith Handbook approved by the Board of Education as part of our, oh, the next setup cycle, and that's actually something that Dr. Orsby has helped develop and write and everything. Also, if you have any questions on that, otherwise I would ask that we go ahead and approve it. Obviously, you saw the great work our Zenith program does and good for our school, so.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the Zenith Handbook.
Motion by Mrs. Speck, second by Mr. Gurner, any further discussion?
I think it's good timing with the kids that join us tonight.
Yeah, it wasn't planned that way, but it did work out, we just needed to go ahead and get it done, we needed to have it ready to go, so.
All in favor, raise your hand. Question passes, 25, 26 Root Ed memorandum?
Yes, the 25, 26 Root Ed memorandum of memorandum of understanding is, is a program that we use at the high school, and that is effectively how we're paying for part of one of our counselors, we have three counselors at the high school, this is actually specifically for one of them, and the Root Ed whole idea behind it is that we'll try to do a better job with transitioning kids, either one in college, jobs, military, and I think over the last couple of years, it's been very, very successful. We've increased the amount of money with kids getting scholarships, we've increased the amount of kids that are applying for scholarships, we feel like we've had a better, we've done a better job of getting kids out into the workforce, getting them into jobs, getting them into placements, and while it doesn't pay for the entirety of it, it only pays about $26,000 of that person's salary, it's something I want to continue to do because, like I said, it's been very, very beneficial for our kids, and, I mean, it's, you know, $26,000 for the hundreds of thousands of extra dollars that we've received now in scholarships just because of this, so, to me, that's well worth it.
Discussion, do you know, Dr. Robinson, how, this is kind of a side bit, the awards banquet or the awards thing with the scholarships, do you have an idea of how much thousands of dollars are given?
I, 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 I,[943.73] happen now is instead of something you print right to the machine, you actually have to use your badge and your scanning code and actually scan it because a lot of times we end up with piles and piles of papers that were printed accidentally or whatever, where this won't allow or at least reduce that. Plus, we can be able to put, you know, limits on total papers or whatever we want to do when it comes to those things. So Paper Cut was important for us to have. All three companies were able to do the Paper Cut. Most have some type of overage of some kind, either it's overage or it's a contract. And if you go over the contract, then it's still an overage. Materials and supplies like your toners, your staple stuff like that, all are able to offer and service is all free. And that's been important to make sure that we can't get serviced, you know, within, we feel pretty fortunate that we have, we don't have like one machine. So when it goes down in the building, we're just, you know, we're just, you know, floating, you know, just floating out there. But so, you know, we're pretty fortunate in that sense, but we've also been pretty fortunate. We've had pretty good service. At the very end, you can see the price per month, cost of that, and that's over the course of five years. Right now, we're probably paying a little over $4,000 for ours. We've got a couple of different ones. Now, we have consolidated more this year. We've taken a couple out, removed a couple that we get to here at Central Office, but we're using one where our special office is down here. And then we let Great Circle use that for a while. And so that'll be one that we don't really need anymore, so we'll tap one of this building. So as you can see, I'd say preference are similar. I think one of them was kind of, it was the Sharp product, was the GFI Digital. They use a bit of Sharp products. But my recommendation will be, you know, with a little bit on this one.
Does the no on overages, does that mean they don't charge?
They don't charge. It'll probably be more like a contract where you'll have a set amount and then I would imagine there's still going to be some type of overage, but as far as just like an overage every month or every quarter, no, so.
So we currently have Toshiba.
Yes.
And you're recommending going to the Minolta product.
Yes.
Same person servicing them, same company?
No, that'd be Konico Minolta. That'd be irresponsible.
A different, some companies service, you know, have different, like multiple.
Mrs. Beck is moved to approve the Minolta contract. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Brimmer. Discussion. On favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Website communication.
Yeah, I believe you, we, well, actually Gina already kind of shared this in her presentation with the, about the Apogee at Parent Square and so we're just asking to go to Parent Square. I would agree, especially with the new two-way communication being so expensive for Apogee. I think they've been a good relationship that took us to the next step, but I think this is the next generation of what we need to do.
Make a motion to approve the Parent Square vote for website communication.
Motion to approve Parent Square, do I have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Ice. Any further discussion?
I think this is something that is talked about in the community. So I think it's benefit.
Thanks for putting the work in and finding it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Right, that passes. And salary schedule.
Yeah. We've got quite a different, quite a few different salary schedules in there. I will, I will start with our certified salary schedule. Flip that and then, okay, so our certified salary schedule and that's all of our teachers and such. So that calendar, I don't have the original on there, but the bachelor's, if you look at step one or bachelor's, that was 43,100. So now that goes to 43,500. We're adding $400 to the base. And then, you know, obviously for a new employee, that's where they would start, but for other employees that are getting a new year of service, it could be anywhere from $450 to $700. Battery's running low. As you go across, you get more money, the longer you stay, the more degrees type thing. So the minimum would be for our certified staff is to get $850, $450 plus the 400. Some could see over 1,000 because they could be at the park with their $700. When I, when I sent the letter to the staff, it's generally around 2.1%. Obviously, if you're over here, you're going to be getting a little bit more than 2.1%. It's not quite exactly what I wanted to do, but I feel like in the kind of climate we're in right now and not knowing if the governor's still going to ax some of the $300 billion and for our SAT, I feel like this is good. I wish I could do better, but I feel like this is something that makes me feel comfortable for next year and still keeps us, our 43,500 base still keeps us very competitive with other districts. I mean, that's where I want to be at too, and I still feel like we're competitive with that, with that price. And so that's my recommendation for certified salary schedule. Counselor and speech are very, very similar. The only thing that really changes with that is when we get to the master's level and we pay them more for their masters because speech pathologists and counselors' masters are a lot of hours. Like ordinarily, it might be 36 for an educator. Sometimes you're talking 60 hours, so we try to reward those people. So the increase is also reflected in theirs. The classified salary schedule, which is our food service, our parents', our clerical or secretaries and custodial and maintenance, those, those individuals, that's where originally when we talked about the Prop A and needing to go, this puts us above that. Now, obviously, we don't have to be there until July, or until January 26th. Twice I've done that. July on the brain. But we don't have to do that till January, but we'd just like to go ahead and do that now and not have to worry about changing salary schedules midstream and changing all that in December and, you know, and still rewarding our people. So that does end up being about a 10% increase across the top for those, for that group of individuals for us to get us there. We've worked hard on trying to get that group up, but, you know, we got to obviously do a pretty big jump this year to get them up to that point in time, so.
Do you think this will help us hire those parent positions that will, that have been so difficult to?
I hope so, because that's, you know, I would say it's nothing to really sneeze about. I mean, that's a pretty good rate. I think it keeps us competitive with all the other businesses that are going to have to do the same thing. And so I still think we have the ability to say, when you're a parent professional, it's definitely a hard job. And, you know, if you want to work summer school, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. And we actually pay for 12 months instead of just denying you work. So we actually pay over the 12-month period. So, you know, you can do something else extra. You can do other things, but while it's a very hard job during the day, you know, hopefully this is something that will entice people to want to do that. So, and we do offer still the differential pay for some of our parent professionals and like custodial staffs and stuff like that. So the next one, Central Office Salary Schedule, we, on all of the, pretty much all the other salary schedules, we, besides, we kept the 2%. So you should have about 1% between these and then we added another 1% to those. And so that's how we handled everybody else, really. The 2% was about what it is, is pretty much across the board except for the parents', secretaries, food service and those. Nurse salary schedule, the exact same way, it's about a 2% increase is what we did. We added 1% to the base. And then administrative salaries, the exact same way. We add 1% to the base. They have 1.1 between steps, so you end up with 2.1. So the last is actually our salary schedule for our extra duties, which is based off of, everything is percentage wise. That's what you see, the one, the half, 0.7s. All that's based off of the 43,500 that we'll be adding or making the new base. So is there any questions about our salary schedules or anything I can answer on that?
So this, in the budget, we have wrapped in the health insurance assessment and we're still able to do this?
We are still able to do this. I mean, we've, as I kind of alerted the staff today, we're doing some reductions in extra days. We're going to flip some calendars. We're probably do some small reductions in hours to make things a little bit more consistent. We have some of our food service that work seven and a half. Other buildings are working seven. We're going to try to make that a little bit more consistent. And, you know, I've already been talking to administrators. I've already been looking at budgets. We're going to have to be a little bit tighter. I mean, we're just in a, well, I don't think we're at a recession or head in that direction completely. I just think we're in a tighter climate right now where our expenditures are going up higher than our revenues are coming in. And that always gives you a little bit of pause at the same time. I want to reward people for the job they're doing. And I think we can do this. Like I said, we are getting some money because we're on 169 days. That at least covers the step and then we have to cover the other $400 per employee for certified. And then we may not be able to do as much next year for non-certified since we're doing so much this year. Obviously, we're not going to probably give a 10% next year. But, but, you know, it might be closer than what we give other staff. It might only be 2% or 3%, so.
So after all this, what do you anticipate?
You know, I think we're going to still be between 22% and 25% at the end of the year when we finish. I know the board goal and what my own goal is 25% to be there, just in case it gets choppy waters. And we'll just have to see. I'm hopeful with some budget cuts and just some different areas and being a little bit more conscious about where we're at on our budget. We, you know, I'd like to be back up to, you know, that 30% by the end of next year and I just feel a little bit more comfortable with that. I feel like we can do more with salaries. But there's just a lot of impacts right now that, yeah. I mean, right now, we're having to hire back a lot of retired teachers. Well, they don't come back at a base teacher salary because we're not finding base teachers. So me paying somebody 43,500 or me paying somebody now $73,000, $74,000 is $30,000 difference. It's, you know, it's two thirds of another teacher. So, and we're seeing that more and more where we can't find teacher. We're having to ask retirees to come back. And all those little things, it used to be when I do salary comparisons between one year and the next year, I could do raises just based on what I was losing because I lost a retired teacher, but I'm hiring a brand new teacher. Which I guess the positive that is now we're hiring new teachers. We're hiring teachers with 10, 11 years experience. So they're coming, they want to be here instead of having just first-year teachers. But all those things are adding up. It's not going down. Every service we use, when we buy food and when we, you know, and when 70% of our cost of our expenditures is labor and we, you know, need to pay people but to keep them here, you know, that's going to, that impacts the bottom line as well.
Thank you for your work in getting all that figured out.
You helped a great job in keeping that money. It's really helped me. So I'd like to make a motion to approve all the salary schedules.
Motion by Mrs. Beck, second. Second by Mrs. Early. Any further discussion or questions?
Kudos. I know you worked hard on this and this has, this has been a couple of months.
So the governor helps us.
That's right. That was worth waiting.
Yeah.
All in favor, raise your hand up. My motion passes. One thing before we do the board member comments, real quick. We have discussed community engagement meetings. I'd like to stick one on the calendar in July. So if we could open next meeting, come on topics, let's talk about what we want that to look like, what we want that to look like and then we can set a date and let everyone know when that is so we can get that, get the feedback that we need before. I'd like to have that before the board meeting in July so that as we're considering handbook changes and things, if we have anything that comes out of that, we can change that and incorporate that in. So just, that's just kind of a request for you. All right. I will invite board member comments at this time if there are any. Thank you. Just like to say thank you to the staff and the teachers and Mrs. May is busy, busy, busy. You're all here extra hours and you're here till almost 10 o'clock tonight and you're here on concert nights and you're here tutoring and you're here after school and you're, I mean, you guys just, you're rock stars and we just appreciate you and wish you all the best. We'll wrap it up another one. Next meeting is June 17th. And I will adjourn this meeting at 9:53. Thank you everyone for coming.
I'm going to throw that away here. No, okay. Oh, here, keep that.
I have been shaking so cold and I have a headache. I'm like, oh my, that hurts. I need to, I just.